This is the biggest crowd we've ever had. So, nice to see everybody. So, Melissa, could you please call order?
Yes, I will call the regular August 8th Town Council meeting to order Mayor Mark Sukup,
Here.
Mayor Pretend Brett Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Oxmacher.
Present.
Councilmember Luke Wagner.
Here.
Any amendments to the agenda, Erin? So I assume we don't have any public comments? Go ahead to start.
Well, I will start with, we were provided written comments that will be added to the minutes by Denise Fisher, Nick Ferguson, Becky Gomez, and Jennifer Martin.
Okay, thanks.
First up is Caitlin Bjork.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Bjork and I live at 3501 Galway Drive in La Porte. I'm the Development Director of Respite Care, a nonprofit organization in Northern Colorado, where our focus is providing short-term quality care for children with developmental disabilities while offering respite to their families. At Respite Care, we firmly believe that every child with a disability is a child first, and his or her challenges are secondary. Guided by this philosophy, we strive to provide families in our community with peace of mind, enrichment, and opportunities. Our services include early childhood care, before and after-school care, evening care, summer day camp, weekend programs, wilderness camp, and extended overnight stays of up to 14 days. Our families pay on a sliding scale based on their income to ensure the specialized care we provide can remain affordable to those in our community that need it most. With a team of up to 68 staff members, over 800 volunteers, and a supportive community, we are proud to serve over 140 families in Larimer and Weld Counties, ensuring that each child receives the specialized care they need. I am here tonight to formally request your approval for an overnight variance that would allow Respite Care to move forward with our due diligence to establish a potential site in the Ladera Development. The location of Ladera is very central, making it easily accessible for the families of the children we currently serve and the additional families we would attract. By having a facility in Ladera, our services would be conveniently available to even more families who need them most in Northern Colorado. The overnight program at Respite Care provides essential respite for caregivers on a short-term basis. It allows peace of mind for families knowing their child is in a safe environment while they can take a night off to attend a concert, go on a date, tend to other family members, or take their other children on vacations or trips that their child with a disability might find over-stimulating, or just to catch up on sleep. It is a crucial piece of our programming, and a potential new building would allow Respite Care to provide overnight care for up to six to eight kids at one time, giving those families a true break. By voting to approve the overnight variance tonight, you would not only be supporting the growth and development of Ladera, but also making a significant difference in the lives of children with developmental disabilities and their families. I trust in your wisdom and compassion, and humbly ask for your approval so we can move forward to see if Timnith and the Ladera Development could be the next home for Respite Care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. I just wanted to note that we are going to have a public hearing on the Ladera PUD overlay amendment. That is item, item 6B. And I believe that there will also be a public hearing on the resolution approving the Ladera sketch plan, correct? Item 6C. So if you do have comments that relate to an item that has a public hearing on the agenda, please save your comments until that public hearing. And this time right now is for general comments on items that don't have a public hearing on the agenda.
That's, the agenda isn't posted as public hearings on those. That's why they weren't listed on the, the PD overlay was, but the other one wasn't.
It didn't have a public comment, did it?
No.
No. So, sorry, sorry about that. Well.
That's our mistake. Up next, Amy Habach.
So Amy, once you wait, yeah. Yeah, that sounds great.
All right. Leanne Massey. Okay, all right. Christine Landon.
I'm Christine Landon and I live at 3945 Cashin Lane in Timnith. And I'd like to address Mr. Mayor and the council members. Tonight, the town is poised to award a contract to Connell Resources for the Timnith Parkway. At the same time, its sister company, Connell LLC, is asking the town for scores of code variances for the Ladera Development, and is asking the town to accept the environmental cleanup costs for its Timnith asphalt plant. These actions have been recommended by TST employees working as contract employees for the town of Timnith while also receiving revenue from the Connell LLC and Connell Resources. Is this merely the product of a small-town relationship, or is it a conflict of interest? Mr. Mayor, you ran for office on the promise to conduct RFPs for all major contracts and to stop these questionable business practices. Tonight's vote is yet another opportunity for you to keep your word. Please do not miss the opportunity to do the right thing for the town of Timnith. The flow of money between these organizations needs to stop. I urge you to vote no on Resolution 46, Series 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa?
Ellen Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Ellen Kavanaugh. I live at 5999 Story Road, and I'm here to address engineering and safety strategies to assure a better pedestrian and biking environment for all of our citizens. I'm a retired nursing faculty, pediatric nurse practitioner, and specifically, I'm going to address four strategies to improve the safety of 60% of our households who have kids. That's 1,200 children in our house, in our community. Number one, primary prevention to reduce the risk of unsurvivable injuries, focusing on River Pass Road and Three Bells. The concern is, number one, the recent child fatality on August 2nd. Number two is the planned addition of 111 new residential homes in the Drayleigh Platte. Number three is that daycare center that's at 6,600 River Pass Road that has small children under the age of five with an unfenced parking lot. River Pass and Three Bells have wide lanes. They have higher operating speeds, 40 miles per hour versus 25 miles per hour on the side streets. Let me tell you the chances of survival. 40 miles per hour, you have a 20% chance of survival as a pedestrian or biker. 30 miles per hour, you have a 60% chance of survival. 20 miles per hour, you have a 90% chance of survival. Reduce the speed to 30 miles an hour. That's similar to stonefly, and I'm referencing page 17 of your transportation plan. Number two, immediately, immediately improve that road infrastructure at Saddlehorn and River Pass Road. It is an ambiguous situation for pedestrians and bikers. There is no protected crosswalk. That's page eight of your transportation plan. Number three, improve the safety of bicycling, the bicycling environment by teaching our kids to safely negotiate the road and ensure bikes are in good working order. Statistics, here they are. Young teens, 10 to 13, account for nearly 37% of all bike injuries. Six to nine-year-olds, they're at 21%, and nearly 77% are all males who get injured. Bottom line, kids make up greater than 24% of all bike-related deaths and greater than 50% of bike-related injuries. My final is, motor vehicles are involved in 90% of these injuries, and I ask each one of you, all you council members and Mr. Mayor, to go to bicyclecolorado.org and take the shift driving course, and each one of you. It'll take one and a half hours online, very informative about how you negotiate a roadway with a bicyclist. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Greg Nierling?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Greg Nierling and I live at 5836 Banner Street in Timnith. My wife and I moved to Timnith almost three years ago after 40-plus years in Littleton. There were many motivations for the move. One was a desire to remove ourselves from a metro area that has declined in the quality of life in many ways. Governments at all levels throughout the area seem more and more unable to effectively address the reasons for the decline. What is concerning is recently learning that some of the same missteps by government in the Denver area seem to be present here, too. One of those missteps being potential conflicts of interest to be endemic in the town contracting process. The Timnith Purchasing Policy, which was signed by Mayor Sokope in December of 2020 and went into effect on January of 2021 states, "No purchaser shall participate in the selection, award, or administration of a bid or contract if there are any financial, family, or any other beneficial interest in the vendor. If a potential conflict exists or is perceived to exist, the employee shall notify the town manager in writing. Town employees shall not be allowed to bid when the town is purchasing or contracting for supplies, services, and construction items." I am learning that for 15 years, TST has profited from what appears to be a substantial conflict of interest, and it will continue to do so if Resolution 46, Series 2023 is approved. Care with me as I list the ways TST profits from this relationship. One, the town of Timnith pays TST employees to perform functions of Director of Public Works, Town Engineer, Director of Community Development, and until recently, Senior Planner. Two, these same employees then refer additional work to TST, and the town pays even more TST employees to perform nonroutine consulting services. Three, the town awards major construction and development projects to TST. Four, TST earns additional revenue from developers such as Connell LLC doing business in the town of Timnith. I urge you to vote no on Resolution 46, Series 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa?
Tim Anderson, you didn't, you didn't mark, so I don't know if you want to make comments. Okay.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Tim Anderson. I live in Timnith Ranch with my wife and our 13-year-old daughter, who is the last of our four kiddos left in the house. I want to start by saying thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council, for hearing me speak. To the Mr. Mayor and the council members for your guidance and your commitment for the continuing to make Timnith a wonderful place to raise a family. When looking to relocate from Fort Collins to Timnith nearly seven years ago, we knew Timnith would continue to grow, and that's why we wanted to move here. That's, we saw a seizing town that we just wanted to be part of. Many of our neighbors and my wife are very excited about the Ladera project. We're excited to have more entertainment options just a few miles away. We're excited to have restaurants that we can bike to and walk to. And we know the Ladera project will come additional tax dollars, and with that benefit to all of us in the project. Timnith continues to grow, and with that growth, then we'll need more tax dollars. The ability to continue to be a community with continued growth of tax revenue in the bank for future services for the better of Timnith, sounds like a win for all of us. Like many of the residents in Timnith, my wife and I cast our votes for you, Mr. Mayor and the council, so that our leadership could continue to be the town of Timnith. There has been a lot of discussion on the type of hotels that might be built in Ladera, or the discussion of the story, what a storage unit might look like, or the caliber size of even a tree, I've even heard. Just for the record, my wife and I travel to swim meets, I'd say, most of the year. We stay in La Quintas, we stay at Hawthorne Ends. They're, they're nice, they're clean. We've never had a concern with any of those. And I'm not for sure why there's a fuss over the size of the caliber of the trees. I have a dear friend who lives in this town that has a very amazing nursery, and I've been told time and time and time again that the time of this, the smaller the caliber of the tree, the more solid choice when planting the trees. I like to trust those who have experience in this, in this field. Mayor and council, I trust you to do the best for our community. I trust you to vote yes for Ladera to be so we could have great services down the road, but also to have the tax revenue to be used in the better ship of this township. I grew up in Missouri in a very small town just like this, and I can remember when our town decided to be more proactive and what it changed, not only in the children's minds, but it brought the adults more together. So I urge you, urge you to vote yes for the Ladera project. Thank you for listening to me speak.
Thank you.
Joe Hollenbeck, you chose both of them. Public comment?
Evening. My name is Joe Hollenbeck. I live at 4980 West Fifth in Timnith. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak on two topics: Code Enforcement and Resolution Number 46, Series 2023, approving a construction phase of the Timnith Parkway Improvement Project. Regarding code enforcement, the town owns property known as the Elliott MLD. Said property is owned commercial mixed use. The town entered into an agreement to lease the Elliott MLD, and the property is presently being used as horse pasture. By Timnith Land Use Code, agricultural uses, including common equestrian stabling and grazing with restrictions, and animal operations, including livestock, are not permitted of the CMU zoning. Noxious weeds, weeds and brush greater than a height of eight inches, and refuse exist on this property. Therefore, a nuisance exists. The town of Timnith needs to address and cure these violations. Regarding Resolution Number 46, Series 2023, 2023, the town is approving funding for various contracts to construct a portion of the Timnith Parkway. One of these contracts is to Connell Resources based on town staff evaluation of RFPs submitted by five contractors. Based on the Brownstein January 10th, 2023 memorandum, also identified March 7th, 2023, as the annexation term sheet, the town of Timnith will provide Connell Resources financial advantages not afforded competing contractors. Specifically, Connell Resources' current operations will be exempt from town sales tax and town-to-oversee final reclamation of gravel pit to ensure land can be timely released from the permit when Connell relocates and the town's reclamation is complete. The other proposing contractors were not provided tax-exempt status, nor were other gravel pits offered reclamation oversight and completion. By not providing all proposers the same cost-saving opportunities, the town has not provided fair and equal treatment to the proposers, proposers during the competitive process. Should the town enter into an annexation term sheet after award to Connell Resources, the terms make the obligation of Connell less burdensome and is equally unfair to the other bidders. Award to Connell Resources should not be made unless all bidders, posers are granted equal treatment by the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa?
Matt Wasserman?
Evening, council and mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Matt Wasserman, I'm at 5250 Second Avenue in Timnith. I want to cover two things. For starters, as a member of Together for Timnith, an Old Town-focused, community-driven organization, I want to thank you for meeting with representatives from the Department of Local Affairs, Colorado Main Street Program, and GIO. So thank you for that. And we understand that as a result from that meeting, councils agreed to become an affiliate of the program. Consistent with the 2000, the 2020 comprehensive plan, Old Town should be a focal point for our community with unique shops, restaurants, places for our community to gather and enjoy. We encourage the town council and city manager to apply for the Colorado Main Street Affiliate Program soon so this community-supported effort to revitalize Timnith's main street can get underway. The partnership offers four programs where we feel the town could gain assistance, including organization, promotion, design, and economic development. We look forward to collaborating with the town of Timnith and the Colorado Main Street Program to further these objectives. Secondly, as a recently elected member of the Board of the Timnith Lakes Metro District 1, I want to alert the mayor and council and town to three actions by the overall developer-run metro districts that me and fellow residents of Timnith Lakes Metro District find very concerning. In September 2000, the first, September 2019, a Facilities and Funding Construction Operation Agreement, FFCOA, was enacted with approval from the town to create a master-servant arrangement, giving the developer-run Timnith Lakes Metro District 6 power over the other districts. This was before any residents lived in Timnith Lakes. I have great concerns about how it prevents the residents of Timnith Lakes, tax-paying residents overseeing the financing and construction of the public infrastructure within their districts. It's a master-servant structure, which is the developers' teller solution to prevent taxpayers from interfering with developers' desire to collect taxes from taxpayers and issue governmental debt to fund the land. and issue governmental debt to fund the land developers' operations. It's clearly taxation without representation. Each metro district possesses the same powers and authority provided under Title thirty-two of the Special Districts Acts, specifically C R S thirty-two one-ten and thirty-two one-eleven. And these generally grant all metro districts sufficient powers to operate autonomously. So I urge the Mayor and Town Council to assist the residents of Timneth Lakes with modifying this agreement. Second, at the April nineteenth twenty twenty, yes, sir.
You you got a couple of seconds.
All right. The other one is the Timneth Lakes Community Authority and Authority Board, which is the First Amendment to the Service Plan. This is a resolution that was passed in April nineteen at the board meeting before residents were on the board. We are opposed to this amendment, and we urge the Council and the Town to reject this amendment if it comes forward from our management district. We find it is unconstitutional for a variety of reasons. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa?
I'm sorry, Aham, I have. I am sorry, Ahmed. Yes.
I apologize.
Good evening, everyone, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember. My name is Ahmed Hesham. I'm a senior engineer at the Natural Resources Consulting Engineers. I'm living here in four-three-eight-zero Lyceum Court. We moved relocated from Arkansas on December, and we landed in in Timneth Lake on March, and since then, we know the H O A fees we agreed upon it. One month later, we are receiving a notice that it's going to be more than double for no services. So we are asking the Mayor and the Councilmember to vote against this increase. If this happens, this would be a catastrophic for owners and for the development. No one will be able to sell or buy a house in this area. So we urge the Mayor and the Councilmember to vote against this fee increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Alberico? Alberico? Okay.
Thank you.
Chris Alberico?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And Councilmembers, I appreciate this opportunity to speak in this public forum like this and that you allow this opportunity. So I will say that just before I start with my comments, I enjoyed the Top Gun movie in the park recently, so. Nice job with that. We live at, my name is Chris Alberico, and I live at four-zero-one-four Kern Street. And we are sort of in the Old Town District. And the reason I'm here is because it appears that some of the second, the areas around our property outside our property limits have sort of been forgotten with regards to weed control. The augmentation pond is, of course, not, is two doors from us, actually. We have another neighbor, but her, she has a barren landscape. But beyond her property is the augmentation pond, and and just recently with all the weather and the increased rain, the weeds are quite high. And I know also that there are lots of plans, I believe, for trees to be put around there, which would beautify that area. But they've now been pretty much consumed by the weeds, which are quite high now. And also with the park, with the Parkway Plan, nothing's been going on on the east side of our property, and the weeds are quite high. So really, I'm my my concern and my comment is just that you remain vigilant with the weed control surrounding the Old Town homes that are going to be abutted up to the Parkway. That's my comment. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not supposed to talk, but I'm going to. If you if you have see a weed problem that goes against, please contact Matt, who will be happy to look into it and hopefully take care of it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Jackie Wilson, did you want to speak? Christian, Christie. That's all we have, sir.
Okay, thanks. All right. Thanks for the comments, everybody. Later on, I think I'm going to deal with a couple factual issues that we need to straighten out. So we are in Consent Agenda for A, Approval of July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three Town Council Meeting Minutes. For B, July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three Check Register. July twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three Check Register. For C, First Reading and Setting a Public Hearing on August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. An ordinance for the vacation of portion of Swetsville Zoo Road right away. Do I have, do I have any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Could I have a motion to approve it?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Council reports.
Yeah, first of all, little bit of, let's let's celebrate good things happening, which is the pickleball courts and tennis courts and basketball courts are open over at the community park. And so I just wanted to recognize everybody that helped bring that to fruition. Certainly, I I know that Brian, is Brian here? Had had a lot to do with that, but it everybody on on the town staff, we had a great little kind of opening ceremony the other day. We did a little bit of pickleball tournament, which was a lot of fun. I want to thank Phil Goldstein for handling some of the logistics of that. That was fantastic. And also Callie and and her team, who who has always did a great job. So I just wanted to put that out there and thank everyone and seeing on social media and whatnot, I'm seeing lots of chatter of people wanting to get pickleball clubs together and how do I learn and who can we bring in to to teach it? So it's it's really exciting and I just want to recognize everyone for that.
Town with the most pickleball courts in Northern Colorado, which includes a town to our west of a hundred and eighty thousand. And we have more than they do. So that's neat that we can provide those opportunities to our, and you don't have to drive five miles to get it. Anybody else?
I just want to let everyone know or remind some of you that there will be a council chat tomorrow night over at Backyard Bird. So we're going to try to help support local business and Brett and myself will be there to listen to ideas, suggestions, and hopefully have a productive conversation of things that are going on and ideas that you have. And so just that is tomorrow at six o'clock at Backyard Bird.
Luke? You know, I just want to acknowledge the two tragic events that happened in our town this past week. I wish those families strength and comfort. I want to thank our first responders, including the Police Department for responding to two very difficult situations. After being a part of this community for the last seven years, it's amazing the support that all of our residents bring to those families and it's amazing to see, you know, all the support that happens during these trying times for those families. So thank you.
I'm going to make a comment about that as well, just again, that our hearts are with those that have suffered some serious losses last week, as well as the driver that was involved in the in the accident. As someone that lives very close to the intersection and a father of young children that loved to bike, I share very much so the the personal interest and stake in making sure our roads and intersections are safe for bikers and pedestrians. I don't want to step on on Mayor's daffstoes, so I I know that he was going to ask them to give a little bit of an update on what was being looked at, but it is something that we all take very, very seriously. There's certainly no discussion of if there is an adjustment or what adjustments are made, you know, is there a cost issue or something like that? That's just not even part of the discussion that I'm aware of. It's what can we do that's the right thing to make sure our roads and intersections are safe for for our children?
Exactly. So I share my fellow councilman's concerns, and it's a hard day. Eddie was a friend of mine, and so it was hard to see him pass. And then anytime a child's hurt, let alone dies, is is a terrible event. We immediately, I will, I will tell you, we immediately that day began looking at what can we do to prevent a similar situation happening again? And we've had a number of meetings, and I'd like to call on Don to tell where we are right now on trying to make it so that situation won't happen again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As as you said, immediately after that, we reached out to a a local traffic engineering firm called Next Phase, and we got a proposal for them from them to do a roadway safety audit that looks at this incident plus the intersection plus the entire stretch of River Pass Road. These, this group is the same group that had investigated the Lopez incident in in Fort Collins. And so they're very familiar with all manner of traffic situations and tragic situations like this. And so they'll be the ones that that are reviewing this, and we look forward to the outcome of their report.
Right. I noticed some of the responses that were in Facebook and that on putting in crosswalks by the school. And Eric, if my recollection is correct, we've been looking at that for almost two years. And Pooter School District has not given us the authorization. My recollection is Pooter School District has not given us the authorization to do any improvements on that area.
It wasn't so much authorization as they wanted to make sure the responses were coordinated with what they were doing around other schools and not a knee-jerk reaction to the the Lopez incident that was just mentioned. Just so happens that we this week have received a report, a safety analysis around Bethke that looked at the school pedestrian access signage. We did a site visit audit back in May, and they've completed the review and have the recommendations of what to do around Bethke to make everything uniform, schools own wise, that's in compliance with normal guidelines, regulations, and what's being done around other schools in the Pooter School District. So we'll be getting that out to you guys here later this week and trying to get signage up in the next week or two.
I think the key thing I want to come across, Eric, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we've been working on this for a year and a half, two years.
It was, we, yeah, we did meet with the school district, happened to be right before COVID, and they wanted to do a site assessment, and all the cars went away. So they've put it on the back burner. And we did meet with them this spring to get it going again, and that's the, it's reaching its resolution as to what to do out there.
So we've been pushing as hard as we can as a town, but we don't have all the controls that, you know, school district, school district. They they got the control of of what happens to go on, and not that they were derelict, but that they wanted it to be coordinated. And so I thought we'd mention that, that we are, we are doing things you don't hear them necessarily, but we are doing and going forward with those items.
Mayor, can I add just one thing to that? I'll just throw this out to people who are watching or listening or here today. If there are particular intersections that you think might be an issue, I would say, let us know. One that I know I've talked about is is one that I go by multiple times a day, which is right by River Pass and Summerfields. And I now have a fifteen-year-old permitted driver, so I'm relearning what is intuitive and not intuitive. And we have called that a two-stop intersection because you have to stop to see the crosswalk, and then you have to go up another ten feet before you can actually see the street to see if cars are going. So if there are other intersections that we can maybe look at while we're doing this, just let us know what you think some of those might be.
Lisa, thanks for warning us on your son being on the behind the wheel. God, I'm going to just clean up a bunch of stuff. So there's a couple of things that are mentioned that I think is a misinformation of facts, and and those those can be disruptive and stuff. The first one is, we're going to soon, the next agenda item, Resolution number forty-six series twenty twenty-three, we're going to talk about the Parkway. I'd like everyone to look strongly and closely at that packet. There were five bids that were sent out and came back. Connell was the lowest bid by a significant sum. There wasn't any favoritism or good old boy going on with that. We looked very closely at it, and Connell was by far the best bid of all the construction companies that came forward. The second thing is, and and sir, if if you know something we don't, I don't know of any tax-exempt status that was granted to Connell.
Are we mixing up Ladera incentives with the with the Parkway construction? Okay.
They're not connected.
Right.
Go ahead. They're not connected.
Just let Lemons from Toronto talk.
Okay, they're just not connected at this moment. And and there, this proposal from the developer, it's a proposal. It hasn't been accepted yet.
Okay.
They're in the county right now.
Were you able to hear what he said? Okay. All right. The that brings us to, anybody else have any comments? That brings us to Resolution forty-six series twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving the construction phase of the Timneth Parkway Improvements Project, continued from the July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three Town Council Meeting. Brian Williamson.
I think it's Eric. Eric Furman.
Thanks.
Okay, Eric.
No problem. Mr. Mayor and Council, as a result of the last meeting, in your packet was included a bunch of additional detail that you requested. Also have a quick presentation to go through to point out the highlights. As noted, this is the Phase One Construction Authorization for the town of Timneth Parkway Improvement Project. As a quick project overview, this is a project that is in the two thousand three, two thousand twenty-three C I P. It has been in the capital improvement project list for many years. The budget at in twenty-three was seven point seven million dollars. This provides a bypass for through traffic around the existing Old Town area. And per the Timneth Landings S I A is an obligation for the town to construct. The first phase of which we're asking for authorization on would build two lanes with bike lanes from Harmony Road to Bus Grove. Would have a landscape median from Cornhusk to Bus Grove, sidewalk from Cornhusk to Fourth Avenue on both sides, and the section from Harmony Road to Cornhusk, the south end of it, would be a temporary alignment to swing it over to match in with the existing intersection location. Once everything's done, the south end of Main Street would be turned into a cul-de-sac once traffic is shifted. This is the ultimate cross-section of the road. It is ultimately a four-lane arterial with raised median. Again, this phase builds that center median, the inside travel lanes against the median, and then a bike lane against that. So in the future, there's basically an additional twelve-foot lane that we need to be constructed. At intersections, at second and fourth, there will be a different lanes, additional lanes for turn lanes. Where the sidewalk is being built, it is being built in its ultimate location and at its ultimate elevation, so it does not need to be reconstructed in the future. For bidding purposes, the project was split into four different segments. The first segment is the north piece from Bus Grove to the railroad tracks. It was split into segments in terms of being able to award it so work could get started. This piece could start immediately to provide a second access into the Timneth Landings development. Segment two is the section immediately across the railroad. This is to be released for construction once the crossing is built by the railroad. The railroad is building the crossing, not this contractor. Segment three would be from the railroad to Cornhusk. We are coordinating the start of this with the contractor. It could be done at the same time as one. But because the work areas are split, that may not be most efficient. And then segment four is the south end that would complete the reroute, and that cannot be started until segments one through three are completed. In addition, there is a 24-inch water line that needs to be completed under the road from Fourth Avenue to Busgrove, and this is immediately underneath a section of road that we're building now, and is why it was included in the scope of work. As mentioned, we issued RFPs for the project in May, right at the end of May. We received five proposals from contractors. In your packet and on this list, the five were Connell Resources, GLH Constructors, Timber Wolf, Duran Excavating, and Mountain Constructors, listed in order from low to high bid. We also ranked each proposal based on several different items, and their scores are shown there. The items we ranked were based on their unit price, in the scope of work, the project team and experience, the project schedule. We asked each of them to propose a schedule on how this would fit into their, to their workload and material availability, asked them for innovative project approaches and cost savings measures, and then the allocation of work, how much of the work were they going to be able to self-perform? That ranged from 80% of the work being self-performed by Connell to... down to about 50, 49% by one of the other contractors. So it was a big range, but Connell was performing, self-performing most of it. There was a comment regarding the tax exempt status and Connell receiving favor for that. Every contractor in this bid receives tax exempt status. This is a municipal project, so all materials purchased for it are tax exempt. That information was shared with all the contractors in the RFP documents they received. So nobody has a tax exempt advantage in the bids that were presented. Based on the proposals, the score, and being lowest price, we're recommending an award to Connell Resources. They have the ability to do this work. They have worked on multiple projects in the town in the past. They have shown the ability to come in on budget or below budget and work very diligently to come up with cost savings as the projects move forward. The construction budget is only just one portion of the budget that would be awarded to Connell. The other budget items are the railroad agreement and the construction of the crossing, geotech testing services for quality control, construction admin and observation. This has been budgeted at 5%. Most of the times in these budgets, that's up to 12% of the contract value. Budget's at five, and typically comes in below that. The last remaining items are the irrigation system water taps, streetlights, and then a contingency in the budget to move forward. Okay, now you can change. Total authorization request for this is $9,214,000. This is 1.1,628,000 over what was in the CIP, and there has been a lot of questions as to why. The construction market in the last several years has been very volatile. It has been up and down. This has been an issue every municipality in the area has had to deal with and has had to come, happen on their projects. Just to illustrate the volatility even on this project, the segment one that I referenced earlier, the north piece of the project, we received an estimate from the developer's engineer last February of 2022 for $4 million to complete that section. In August of last year, one of the contractors that bid provided a cost estimate through the developer to build that section for 3.6 million. We now bid it this year, and the prices for that section came in from between 5 and 6 million, including one from the same contractor. So it's been a volatile market that we've tried to keep up with, but it's difficult to do. There are also other items in the budget that have come in higher than anticipated, railroad crossing being one, irrigation taps. And so that's why the request is more than what was in the original CIP. In addition to that request, I previously mentioned the 24-inch water line that needs to be completed. We're asking for an additional 1.1 million in order to construct that water line as part of this construction contract for several different reasons. It's required to be built before we can build the Parkway. It's best for the same contractor to do the work from a coordination standpoint and a warranty work quality standpoint in case there's issues with backfill or water tightness in the future. And this work will be reimbursed by Timnith Landings because it is their obligation. There was a draft reimbursement agreement in your packet, and most important, we will be requiring that it be reimbursed as construction moves forward. Real quick overview of schedule, pending authorization, notice of award would go out tomorrow to the winning contractor. August, September would be shop approvals and acquisition of materials. Both the concrete boxes and the water lines have a long lead time. October through November would be building the box culvert, which is required to be built for the water line can be built, which goes over the top of it, which currently is projected to start in February of '24, based on availability of the materials. Hopefully, we can get them sooner. Road construction in earnest would be April, September, next summer season, with completion of Phase or Segment one being September '24. Pending the railroad crossing completion, if they can get that completed late this year, early next year, Segments two and three could start in June of next year. Segment four could tentatively start in August with full completion and open road by December '24 per Connell's scheduled proposal. That's my quick recap, and I open it to any questions you might have.
Thanks, Eric. I guess I do have a couple of questions, and that kind of speaks to what you talked about to a volatile market. Do we have any inflation or price protections in this?
The, the award would lock in the Segment one work because that is guaranteed work that can they can put underneath contract immediately. The other segments, because we can't tell them when to, when they could start and could guarantee the work would fall in a certain period, those prices are unfortunately not locked in. We're trying to get some of the bigger tickets guaranteed in some way. But most, most suppliers aren't guaranteeing things past 30 days without a written contract.
I'm just looking through the quotes. I noticed there's a cost for mobilization, and this, this was higher by Connell. And the first one, I was just hoping you could explain to me what, what it means for cost mobilization. That was in the packet when you're comparing the quotes.
So the mobilization covers a getting their equipment to and from the site. It also covers their general office overhead, their construction admin. And so it does vary between contractors on the amounts they put in to manage the project.
And with the roughly, you know, million-dollar savings, what advantages or cost savings did Connell present?
The first several ones they came up with initially is they've asked for a change of the asphalt material type from specifications to a higher-quality asphalt that is being used more often now, so it results in a lower price. So a change from standards on that. They have proposed looking at the pavement section, getting a geotech to reevaluate, to possibly do a cement treatment approach, which would thin up both the base course section and the asphalt section and reduce the cost of the asphalt paving section of the, of the road. They had another one too, but I don't remember it off the top of my head.
I guess this question is for Lisa, if you don't mind. How will we, so with the overages, how will we count for the overages either in this year's, this year's budget or next year's budget?
Good evening. So based on the project timeline, we anticipate 2.5 million out of the 2023 budget and 6.8 out of the 2024 budget. So we don't need to appropriate any additional funds in the 2023 budget. It does impact our 2024 CIP. We're in the process of evaluating all of those projects right now. I'm looking at the long-term implications in future years' projects. This was a pretty big hit, 1.6 million. Half of it will be reimbursed by the developer down the road, so we're taking that into consideration as well.
Thank you, Lisa. So I know you guys are working on the budgets right now. Anything that we can take, kind of what you're talking about, into this year's budget to help us make it more accurate or lessons learned?
Well, I don't know that we would necessarily put 20% on every project that we currently have in there, but we're digging into those details, particularly with those that are going into construction. I think council is gonna have to really evaluate that when we look at the CIP and look at maybe '24 and know the future years, maybe just a little bit more nebulous as the market's very volatile.
Thank you. Thank you.
Eric, I just want to refresh my memory here on the agreement for Timnith Landing to reimburse us for the water line. That's an agreement that's been in place for some time, if I recall correctly. Is that right? The, the general relationship of them helping to pay for the Parkway and...
The general, the, the general, the agreement that they will reimburse, or not reimburse, pay for 50% of the Parkway costs in the future has been in long, in place in a long time. That's in the SIA that was passed in 2017. The reimbursement agreement for the water line is a new agreement. Because they were supposed to have built it already.
Okay, so we're helping to accelerate that, that reimburses as development occurs?
They will reimburse that as the construction of the water line occurs. So as the contractor builds it, they will invoice us every month. If we get an invoice that includes water line work, we will turn around and bill that to the developer for immediate payment.
Okay, so that's just an immediate pass-through. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I really appreciate you putting that together, and definitely helps give an idea of what the project looks like. I think this question came up a little bit last time, but I'm hoping you can provide some information as to strategically why we're building two lanes now as opposed to all four with things like escalating costs and things like that. Why is, why is that the right decision?
That was the decision that was reached back in 2017 in terms of how the, the project would be phased and built. It is something we can definitely look at in terms of if that's still the correct decision, at least for a center portion of it.
Yeah, I, I think it's still the correct decision. I mean, the, the volume of traffic, both north and south of it, it don't require a four-lane road yet. So we have the right of way, we have the design for it, we have, we've, we've anticipated the expansion of it in the future. You know, roadways, building them ahead of the, the actual demand, as has proven out in the past, to not be a prudent thing to do. We incur the maintenance, and the life of these things are finite. And so to build them ahead of when they're needed probably isn't the right thing from our perspective.
Okay, and you touched on it a little bit, but, you know, initially, there was some concern that we're gonna build a two-lane road with, you know, things like trees on the side and sidewalks and curbs, and then we'd have to tear all that up when we expand it to four lanes, but, but it sounds like that's not the plan. Is that right?
I do not like tearing stuff up. So where we can build it, where it ultimately sits is what we're gonna do in those locations, and get the sidewalk at its ultimate, it's done. They can landscape behind it, that's done.
The railroad, of course, has been terrific to work with.
They always are.
Yeah, what, what is our risk that we, we build a, a road to nowhere and that that railroad crossing never gets approved?
We have had multiple meetings with the PUC staff, which is ultimately the one that approves the railroad crossing, not the railroad. And they've been on-site, they have been involved with us from the, for years on trying to get this crossing built. They understand the importance of it and the shifting of the major rural, major through-traffic to a perpendicular crossing that is a safer crossing, and have given all indications that they support approving the crossing. If the situation were to happen where they would not approve this one because of crossing proximity, which is always a risk, then we can look at shifting the Main Street crossing to this location and making this the priority, primary crossing. As it is, they have indicated support for both crossings to remain and are currently, through a grant from the state, improving the Main Street crossing to be signalized. Hopefully, yet this year, but again, it's the railroad and the state involved in this one, and we'll see when they get it done.
So we, we assess that risk as, as being fairly low.
Correct.
So we are kind of beholden to the 2017 subdivision improvement agreement in terms of getting reimbursed on anything other than the pipeline. Is that correct?
The 50%, of the road construction cost, we are also being reimbursed from them. We are currently collecting a building fee per lot to go towards that amount. I'll have to rely on Lisa on what that amount is, if she remembers, because I do not. So we are collecting that as the permits come in to... I'm sorry, I've been corrected. When they plat, with each plat, we are collecting the fee based on the number of lots. That goes towards that 50% that they'll ultimately need to repay. Once the project is completed and the built, road is built in its ultimate configuration, then there's a reconciliation with the developer that if costs exceeded what they estimated to develop those fees, then they have to pay in that additional at that time.
I guess I'm just looking at, from the developer perspective, it seems like they get a pretty good deal and that we finance it upfront and, and they pay for it later. Is that how we, how we're currently doing things? I, I realize this is 2017, it's seven years ago, six years ago, right? For, for current projects, is that our same agreement or have, have we evolved to something else?
They're case by case. You know, there, there is none of them that, that are the same. And so it, it's an evaluation during the, during the development of the process and of the development and the approval of the development. At the time, the, every, every development has a subdivision improvement agreement. They're all different, and they're all specific to the, the uniqueness of that development. So I can tell you the consistency there is to make it fair and to make development pay its way.
So we have the Connell bid at 6.8 million, and then we have the other projects here. Will those projects go through separate RFP, or how are those vendors selected?
A lot of it depends on what the items are. I mean, for the most part, they are sole-source type situations. The railroad at the $850,000, we don't have any choice on. Geotech services, we've asked for some proposals on that. Irrigation systems currently designed, that will be a change order slash bid to add that to the contract if it's under Connell's or separately. The water taps, we gotta buy those from the district at their going rate. Streetlights are set materials on the town standards vendor, so no, most of it is established vendors.
And you mentioned the, the water taps and those being more expensive than we anticipated. Can you, can you give an idea of the, the scope of that?
So the water taps, tap fees have been increasing year over year. Are currently $190,000 is the current. We have budgeted extra to try to get them purchased next year and hope they don't go above what we budgeted. That is, again, out of the town's control. We have, I have approached the district, since these are irrigation taps, and we are drip irrigating a set amount of area to see if we can get any reduction in them and have not seen any response, but we are looking for cost savings wherever we can.
And I'm, I'm glad you brought up the, the point of drip irrigation. So, so that's our, our plan here is to drip irrigate this. There won't be sprinklers spraying water.
We, we are only responsible for irrigating the center medians, so they are currently landscaped. The plan is similar to what's on Harmony Road, and that's all drip irrigation in there.
And then we do have in this appropriation, an estimated 5% for construction administration and observation. And then we do have in this appropriation, an estimated 5% for construction administration observation. Can you talk about, that's estimated to be $363,000, but what does that look like? What, what services are we paying for there?
So those are the services to, A, administer the contract, manage the contract, review invoices, pay apps as they come in against work actually performed. Involves daily observations in the field of the work the contractor is doing to make sure that it meets town standards, town requirements, to address questions, issues that come up through the course of a construction project. And so it's estimated because those are, it's an hourly service based on the time actually needed to fulfill the, the services.
That's all I have?
All right. Anybody else?
No, I think, I think everybody asked all the questions. It's nice going last sometimes.
I second that. So I think we've covered it all. So do I have a motion? Resolution 46, series 2023, a resolution approving construction phase of the Timneth Parkway improvements project.
I move to approve resolution number 46, series 2023, a resolution approving the construction phase of the Timneth Parkway improvements project.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Mayor, before you, before we vote, I propose maybe a little discussion. A little discussion on
What?
On whether or not we ought to approve this?
Whether we have to approve it?
That's, that's appropriate procedurally after the motion and second to discuss the, the vote before, and you can share your individual council members can share their thoughts to proceeding their votes.
Does anybody have any thoughts?
Well, again, I, I want to thank the staff for, for putting this together. I obviously last week expressed some concerns here. Some of my concerns were related to the fact that we only had information about one of the bids, detailed information. I appreciate that all five proposals are in there now. I have reviewed those and I am comfortable with the Connell bid in comparing it to the others. I think that we would really have to engage in some gymnastics to select anyone other than Connell. We talked two weeks ago a little bit about maybe why they have some competitive advantage being local here. So I, I feel good about the, the Connell bid there. I, of course, am always frustrated to see these projects expand in price. I understand that, that some of that is inflation and, and an odd construction environment. But I also recognize that initially when we improved 7.7 million in the CIP, it, it didn't include everything that, that it probably should have. But in looking at the additional expenses, I, I am comfortable with allocating those. And so with, with this additional information, I, I will be supporting this here today.
Anybody else? Brett?
I want to make a quick comment. Connell's the lowest bid. It was, they're not getting anything special for this deal. It's the lowest bid. It seems like a pretty straightforward choice. TST is the town engineers. They're going to get paid to, to manage the project. They're going to do town engineering. They're the town engineers. There's no conflict of interest there. It's what we're paying them to do. This is a project that's been in, in the works for a very long time, since before most of the towns even lived here. Traffic is the top concern of the community. This is, this project is one of the primary things we can do to help traffic on Harmony Road, allowing people to, to have an outlet up to Prospect. And Main Street is simply not designed to handle the amount of traffic that's going up it and, and I am supportive of making Main Street also a safer traffic situation. So I also enthusiastically will be supporting this.
Thank you. Lou?
Yeah, I, I want to echo some comments. Thank you, staff. Thank you for the presentation. It was very helpful. I appreciate all the bids being in there. So I thank you. You know, traffic is something that we struggle with all the time and we hear about a lot. So, you know, I've heard a lot about semis going down Main Street and so that just is not safe for anybody. So I think doing this mitigation will help. I do appreciate that you guys will be, you know, looking at the project budget and looking at that contingency and putting in that packet monthly. So I, I find that very helpful and I will be supporting this project.
Okay. Do I call for a vote, Caroline?
That's, yes, you do.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
I.
Hi. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0, resolution, resolution number 46, series 2023, a resolution approving the construction phase of the Timneth Park improvements project. Project. Okay, it is now seven after seven. We've had sort of an intense discussion for the last hour and five minutes. So let's take a five minute break, let everybody stretch their legs and we'll then reconvene.
All right, thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is the Ladera Plan Development Overlay Amendment. The owner is Connell LLC, represented tonight by Galloway and Stacklot. Just to kind of give a quick overview, this is where we're at in the development process. Before sketch plan, preliminary plat, final plat, this PD overlay amendment is this portion of the process for modification to land use code criteria. The subject property is located south of Swetsville Zoo Road, kind of east and west of Whitehall Street, highlighted there in blue. The existing zoning is regional commercial with that existing PD overlay that, that is being requested to be amended tonight. I'm highlighting here the areas that are being requested for amendment. So this amendment, the code sections that are being asked for to be amended are related to the definition of childcare or a care facility, floor area ratio for two areas within the subdivision, a height allowance for one area and then a modification to buffer standards. And then there is actually a request, that was a request done by staff for some landscaping standards on tree size and tree replacement or keeping of trees. The change to the care facility is to remove the restriction that care can only take place for less than 24 hours and allow it up for 14 hours. This would allow for the, for different types of care facilities that would require overnight care of a patient. The floor area ratio changes would be intended for an indoor storage facility and then a lot intended for a hotel. The current code requirement for floor area ratio, floor area ratio is generally what all you can, the square footage you can build on a lot. And so if you have a 10,000 square foot lot, you could only build at a point five, you could only build 5,000 square feet, just kind of as a reference point. And then the, so the request for that is to increase the storage facility, the intended storage facility lot to the floor area ratio of 1.55. And then the lot intended for a hotel to be increased from point five to point six. The height increase request is for also the lot that is intended for a hotel. The current maximum height in the regional commercial is 40 feet. And then this request would be just on that one intended lot to be increased to 65 feet to allow for that hotel user. The last requested change would be a buffer standard on the intended storage facility lot. Currently, the requirement in the land use code is a buffer 50 to the north property, which is the Swetsville Zoo property, which is in, in unincorporated Laramie County. And due to the Swetsville Zoo property designation in our comp plan of same designation of the employment regional commercial, this applicant is requesting that that buffer 50 be reduced down to the buffer 10, since that is the intent for that property, the north, to develop under the same standards. The, the modification from the, that staff had actually requested to be changed was for tree planting size. More and more with developments that we've had over the years and, and talking with a lot of the nurseries in, in the area, the large caliber trees are in very limited supply. There's not much of a chance to get them in this area. A lot of them have to go out of state to get the larger caliber sized tree. So due to that, staff over the years has had to have multiple discussions with their developments about that caliber sized tree to see if getting a smaller sized tree planting would be acceptable. And even installing a smaller caliber sized tree does actually allow for the tree to grow a little bit faster in the areas that they would be intended for. And then the last one is on the, the large deciduous tree or the trees being preserved. This is actually being requested from the staff to get back generally towards the original requirement of the location and preservation of trees on the, on the site existing now. There are very few trees that are natural to the area, more on the south side of the existing, what's called phase one. Kind of where near the old. existing, what's called phase one, kind of where near the old ditch was. So there's very few trees that would be impacted with that. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item back on July 18th and recommended approval by 5-0 vote with some notes that they wanted to pass on and a condition that they wanted to pass along as well is that the north side of Lot 1, Block 2, which is the intended, the intended storage facility lot, tree planting size be unchanged to help with the additional buffering off the bat. And then they had some, a lot of commissioners had questions about traffic. And then the proposed storage facility and their height request and the character of that building, there were questions related to what kind of trips a hotel, storage and care facility would generate versus general shopping and retail. And then questions about the timing of road improvements and when they would occur. With that, staff has reviewed this application against the land use code criteria and has found that their requests meet the criteria set forth on land use code for a PD overlay. With that, I will turn it over to Steve or Carolyn or Grant.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff. My name is Grant Nelson with Public Investment Group, 9635 Maroon Circle. I've only been there a year, can't remember my address. Here tonight on behalf of Ladera Connell LLC to speak to you on the PD overlay, I'm here with some of my partners and most of the first two pews in the bright side over here, our team members. If you have questions, we are all here tonight to answer those questions. At the end of the first reading, I know one of the members of council asked that there be an overview of the project or better explanation. So we're all here in case you guys have questions, we're here to answer those questions. So in overview, the first phase of this, we annexed about 20 months ago in the fall of 2021. The first 60 acres were annexed, but in overview, the total Ladera project is 240 acres, 133 of which will be developable, 107 of which will be open space, be about 2 million square feet estimated at total buildout. We believe that this project will have seven, maybe eight different use types ranging from retail, restaurants, entertainment, assisted living, fitness, office, residential hospitality, and nonprofit. We may have more, we may not have some of those. A lot of what we have done is projected forward, what we believe the vision of this project is. Our site plan, as you see, is ever evolving. We are changing with whatever users are coming and are interested in Timmouth, in an interest in Ladera. And the PD approval tonight is only subject to the first 20 or about 25 acres of developable. The, the changes are very necessary. We are really appreciative of your time tonight to consider them. The vision we have for the project is the site plan on the screen. If you go to our website, we have a fly around that shows what we're anticipating and hoping this project will look like. And again, we're here tonight to answer any questions you have on any of these changes or on Ladera in general. At this point, there's some renderings that you can see as well that are up on the website. Please go there and look and we will, that will be changing as we advance different site plans and different ideas through the project. At this point, I'll hand it over to Carolyn White with Brownstein, and she will present our PD and, and then in the next one, the sketch plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, town staff, and members of the public. My name is Carolyn White with Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek, and I'm counsel for the applicant Connell LLC. My address is 675 15th Street in Denver, 80202. And I'm just going to give you a little overview, and then we're going to turn it over to Steve Weens to walk through the specifics of what's in the PD overlay. And then I'm going to come back and talk about how that specifically links to the five criteria in your code for a PD overlay amendment. So just to orient you again, what we're talking about tonight relative to the overview as Grant just shared with you, the overall vision for Ladera covers all 240 acres owned by Connell LLC. Right now, about 60 acres of that has been annexed into the town of Timmouth, and the rest is the subject of a pending future annexation that is under review by the town. Tonight, we are not talking about that pending future annexation. We're just talking about the part that's already been annexed. And specifically, you know, Connell LLC decided to split this up into two different parts, in part because of tenant demand. We knew we had some tenants ready to go on the first phase. That's floor and decor that you see that's already open. And, and also because of development costs, wanting to phase the cost of development, as you all just talked about a moment ago, for a town project. And so we've got two phases. Tonight, we're talking about sort of the next steps for the first phase. And so what that really is, is 48.84 acres of the overall 63 some acres that was annexed back in October. Why is it only 48 acres? That is because floor and decor is excluded. Floor and decor has already been built. It doesn't need to be the subject of any potential future zoning changes. Whitezel Street is also excluded. That's already been constructed and dedicated to the town. And so what's included in the PD overlay is the green on this slide and the light blue, which is the portion of Whitezel Street that has, that is, that is not, it has been constructed and hasn't dedicated to the town, but it's part of this application. So this is what we're talking about tonight, the blue and the green. One more. Come on. There we go. Okay. So now I have Steve Weens of Stacklot, who's going to walk through the seven specific proposed amendments to the PD overlay.
Good evening. My name is Steve Weens. I'm with the firm Stacklot. My address is 5639 South Curtis Street, Littleton, Colorado. As Kevin mentioned, the PD overlay amendment that you see before you tonight has seven minor differences from the original PD overlay, which was approved in April of 21. This slide represents the original approval back in 21. Following slide represents our changes that we're requesting tonight. We feel that many of these changes are minute in nature, such as the tree caliber size or the definition of what trees are to be preserved on site, but we would like to discuss three specific changes with you. The first change is the PD overlay is the height amendment, which is on lot C and D. This is to increase the height, the allowable height from 40 feet to 65 feet for a proposed hotel. The hotel is 25 feet above what is set forth in code, and it is for this lot only. We cannot transition that 25 foot allowance to any other lot within this PD overlay. We feel this is an appropriate size for an hotel. Many of the hotels in Northern Colorado are this size and in fact larger. For example, such as an Embassy Suites is 80 to 90 feet. The slide represents the change. The middle slide there, or the middle image represents a 15% height exception allowance that you can do at site plan. And what we're requesting once again is to go from 40 to 65 feet. The following two slides are renderings of what the hotel will look like from Swetsville Road at a 65 foot height and also the river. The second PD overlay amendment we're requesting is for an increase in floor area ratio for both lots labeled their B and E. The first is a storage, as Kevin mentioned, from point five to 1.55. And the second is for the hotel from point six or from point five to point six. Both of these increases are requested along Whitezel Road, which is a major collector. And we feel that the major collector and the density provided along that collector is entirely appropriate. The final change that we're requesting, oops, sorry Carolyn, the final change that we're requesting is what Kevin mentioned again, is the decrease in buffer width on the lots B and E to the land to the north. The land to the north is zoned or not zoned, it's currently within the county, but it's within a comprehensive plan to be regional commercial in the future, and we're trying to match a code condition. And also, as Kevin mentioned, Planning Commission requested that we increase caliber size along within that buffer, and the development team is willing to do so. I'll turn it back over to Carolyn.
Thank you. Very briefly, I just want to talk a little bit about what Steve described and how it fits within the criteria in your code for consideration of a PD overlay amendment. And just briefly, I want to talk about what a PD overlay amendment is. There have been some comments describing what we're proposing here as a variance. You do have a process in your code called a variance, and it follows a certain set of procedures and criteria. That's not what this is. PD overlay is a way to customize zoning for an innovative, integrated, overall development. That's what has already been approved for this project, and we are proposing to tweak what has already been approved for its, for this project in the few very minor ways that Steve has just summarized. And so this is really not a variance, this is custom zoning. That's what a PD overlay is as part of an overall vision and an overall integrated implementation plan for a mix of variety of different uses. I'll just mention that there are two letters in your packet that we wrote back in July. One was in response to specific comments and concerns raised about our application. And the other one goes through each of these five criteria in some detail, explaining how the application meets the criteria. So I'm not going to go through all of that in detail now, but I want to mention just two, two things that I think may be important to your consideration tonight and anticipating some of the comments that you might receive. The first one is impact on surrounding properties. And that's, that's one of the criteria here is that there's no substantial impairment to the appropriate use or development of adjacent properties. And so I want you to know that the development team has spent a great deal of time and effort analyzing this issue as part of this application. And the development will not have any adverse impacts on health, safety, and welfare. It will not create negative impacts on adjacent properties. Actually, with the exception of two out of these seven, all of these other changes are tied to specific lots within the development, and those lots are actually central to the middle of the development, such that they will be buffered from all the surrounding properties by the other lots within the development. The two lots with the increased height and the maximum FAR are actually adjacent to open space, and they'll be buffered by that additional open space between it and any adjacent properties. The other way that you might potentially see impact in a project is of course traffic. And I know that's a hot topic in this community, like it is in virtually every community. And even though traffic analysis actually isn't part of the analysis at this stage of the development, an extensive traffic analysis of this project was conducted originally when the project was annexed in 2021. And it has been a major focus throughout the design of this project. We talked a moment ago about Whitezel Street, which of course was constructed with the very first component of phase one with the floor and decor. And at the time, that was built as the full four lanes, even though only two were actually required in order to accommodate the amount of traffic that was being generated by that phase of the development. So this is really indicative of the important role that this developer, this property and this project have played in trying to do their part to not only accommodate their own traffic as required by the code, but to help the town solve some of these existing regional deficiencies. And then in terms of innovative development, Ladera is really going to be unlike anything else within the town of Timmouth. Having all these uses together in one location, integrated with a network of trails, landscaping with a unified architectural theme, the ability to be able to walk and work and shop and do all of these recreational activities, all in close proximity to each other, incorporating revenue producing uses with open space uses, promoting walkability and connectivity. And it is only possible to do that because of the PD overlay, the proposed amendments to the PD overlay. And there will probably be future proposed amendments to the PD overlay as additional users come forward and have identified specific needs that they might have for their specific use. So we want to emphasize also that these seven modifications do not for a minute mean that this proposal is not consistent with your comprehensive plan. To the contrary, the comprehensive plan says that what it envisions here and what it has envisioned for at least 20 years is this exact kind of robust mix of employment and regional commercial uses. And in order to achieve that, particularly in order to accommodate what the, you know, sort of best current land use planning practices are and what the current requirements of the end users that are active in the marketplace are, it becomes necessary to make these little tweaks here and there. What's being proposed is very surgical, it's very specific, and it's very narrow, just what is needed to accommodate the proposed development. So therefore, the proposed amendment meets all the relevant criteria in the land use code. I also want to briefly mention, you have another set of criteria in the code related to rezoning, which technically isn't the set of criteria that the town uses to evaluate a PD overlay amendment, because you have a specific set of criteria that I just went over. But if you look at the rezoning criteria as well, it also meets these criteria, in particular this innovative and creative design to promote a mix of land uses. So with that, we thank you for your time and attention. As was mentioned, we have our whole team of experts here to answer any questions you may have. We look forward to that opportunity and to respond following public comment.
Thank you, Carolyn. Kevin, did you have anything more to say? Okay, so this does get confusing. So if you're looking at your agenda, let me tell you how this is going to flow through. 6B, ordinance number 13, series 2023. We will be discussing now and making it open for public comment. This is where the amendments to the PD overlay are. So that is, if you have concerns about the PD overlay amendments, this is the time that you talk. The second is resolution, a resolution approving the Ladera Sketch Plan, and we will talk about that second. And if you wish to discuss that, we'll have public comment at that after we discuss and vote on 6B. Okay? Does that make sense for everybody? Okay, so at this moment, I think I'm going to open up public comment.
Hey, we'll open the public hearing at 7:37. And let me go back to the sign in sheet, Amy Hoback.
Thank you. Amy Hoback, 4473 Starflower Drive, Fort Collins. Good evening and thank you. My name is Amy Hoback, and I live in Fort Collins with my husband Brad and my two children, Avery and Lucas. I'm the marketing and events manager of the group Real Estate, and I sit on the board of directors for Respite Care. It is an honor to be able to speak with you all this evening on behalf of Respite, an incredible nonprofit organization that has done so much for me and my family. Lucas, who is now almost 12 and going into sixth grade, was born with a brain abnormality and an overall undiagnosed genetic syndrome. He is our greatest challenge, but alongside our daughter Avery, one of our greatest joys. We knew we needed help when we were encouraged to check out Respite Care. Brad and I were nervous that others would not be able to take care of his needs like we could, but that couldn't be further from the truth. Respite Care saved our family. Lucas has been attending Respite Care for about 10 years. He has had the privilege of being in a space where he is embraced and nurtured exactly as he is. He thoroughly enjoys his time there, engaging in enriching activities with both his friends and the dedicated staff. His time there affords me and my husband the time to work, spending time with friends, attending our daughter's soccer games, and it's also allowed me the time to speak with you all here tonight. The range of services provided by Respite Care is truly remarkable. This summer, Lucas had the chance to take part in Wilderness Camp, and he was able to experience the overnight program that Respite offers. As a parent of a child with a disability who requires constant care, I cannot stress enough how crucial the overnight program is for families in situations like ours. Being an 11-year-old boy with unique needs, Lucas misses out on the opportunities like sleepovers and slumber parties at friends' houses. Respite Care bridges that gap by providing a safe and enjoyable environment where he can have his own slumber party. And it gives Brad and I the opportunity to have precious one-on-one time with our daughter. We can go to the movies or attend a concert in Denver. It's a win-win for our family. Respite Care stands as a unique and invaluable asset to our community, far exceeding the role of a mere babysitting organization. It truly stands alone in its offerings. A new facility in the Ladera development would expand access to Respite Care services, benefiting numerous families who required specialized support. The requested overnight amendment is a crucial in addressing this pressing issue, enabling Respite Care stakeholders to quickly evaluate viability and propel the process forward. Therefore, I'm here today to ask for your support in approving the amendment for the overnight program. Your approval will be a crucial step in supporting families like mine, promoting inclusiveness and empowering Respite Care to extend assistance to a large number of families requiring help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leanne Massey.
Good evening. My name is Leanne Garfield Massey, and I live at 1320 Windjammer Cove.
My name is Leanne Garfield Massey and I live at thirteen twenty Windjammer Cove, Fort Collins. Last year I retired as the executive director of respite care, Inc., after working there for 25 years. Tonight I'm here to tell you why the overnight overnight program is so critical to our services. Amy explained that this sought after program is considered a gem in our community. Respite care has been chosen as one of 13 exemplary programs in the United States by Arch National Respite Network. As a result of our success, communities across the nation seek our guidance on implementing similar, similar programs. Respite care has been supported physically, emotionally and financially by the Northern Colorado community for more than 40 years. Eighty percent of our annual budget is provided by fundraising events and local donations. We are respected, financially stable and proud and conscientious property owners. We not only provide respite for families and children with disabilities, but we also offer internships and employment opportunities to students from surrounding colleges and high schools. Providing overnight accommodations is a crucial aspect of the unique services we offer. I would like to share a few more overnight stories. Stacy is a single mother of a 17 year old son who relies on respite care. You could imagine her panic when she had to have emergency surgery. Her son is non-verbal, needs medications, has seizures, is on a restricted diet and is not toilet trained. Stacy's aging parents lived on Utah and her friends and neighbors are not trained or comfortable providing the comprehensive care that Andrew needs. She called respite care and was able to arrange a six night stay while she underwent and recovered from surgery. What would she have done without respite care? Another mom wanted to take her oldest daughter on college visitations. However, her husband's job takes him out of town often. And she needed somebody to take care of her younger daughter who uses respite care. Not only did respite care provide care, but every night also read Julian's favorite bedtime story. We were able to show her videos of mom and dad when she was feeling homesick and had therapy dogs visit to help distract her. I'm happy to tell you that her big sister Audrey was able to visit and later enrolled at the University of Alaska. As a fourth generation native of Northern Colorado, I can attest to the incredible sense of community here. It is not just the mountains, healthy living conditions and great weather that define this region, but also the genuine empathy and care demonstrated by its citizens. I sincerely urge you to vote in favor of allowing respite care to offer overnight accommodations at the Ladera site. Thank you.
Thank you. Leanne, I mean, sorry, Melissa.
Joe Hollenbeck, did you want to say anything else?
Yeah. Evening again. My name is Joe Hollenbeck. I live at forty nine eighty West Fifth Avenue. During the planning commission meeting, July eighteenth of 2023, in review of this item, it was the opinion of the chairperson, a 13 year Timth resident, that all but 323 residents said every opportunity, you know, that there would be regional commercial in this location, that his street doesn't get plowed because sales taxes lacking. More sales tax revenues are required for our great little town moving forward. And not all the people will be pleased with the sales tax generating sources. During the same meeting, the town engineer expressed that although there are traffic problems, it is generally a good problem with active businesses, residents and people traveling in and out of the region. Being one of the 223 residents, the actual 2010th population, who did not have the opportunity to realize that land in the flood plain and designated as open space would turn into regional commercials, the mess at Walmart and the development south of Harmony. I have a different view of the need for more traffic problems and more sales tax revenues being required for our great little town to move forward. However, I do share the view that people coming into Timneth deserve consistency and enforcement of the town's land use code and regulation. Timneth ordinance number one of nineteen ninety four, section four point one, one, four, provided area requirements for commercial district of maximum building height of 40 feet or three stories and a floor area ratio not to exceed point five oh. Timneth's latest land use code, table five point two, provides a maximum height of 40 feet with a possible exception of 15%. And table five point one provides for regional commercial, a floor area of point five oh. Thirty years of land use development, review, changes and citizen input and the maximum height of 40 foot and the floor area ratio of point five oh remained unchanged. That's consistency. Just as Timneth residents had the opportunity to know for 17 years that regional commercial existed, residents and developers have known for 30 years that in Timneth, a building can be, can't be higher than the 40 feet, possibly 46. And the floor area ratio cannot be greater than point five oh. Council members took an oath to support the ordinance of the town, not variances and waivers to support developers. Council should not approve variances for 30 year old standards that have stood the test of all Timneth citizens. P S, it's too bad the planning commission chairman didn't that live here when those of us with the equipment like Bob Flockhart, Greg Stephen, Les Thompson and others removed the snow from streets and neighbors driveways.
Sir, can you wrap it up in the next 10, 15 seconds?
Yeah, that was a great little town.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else signed up, but is there anybody in the audience who would like to make public comment?
Okay.
I will close the public hearing at seven forty eight.
Thank you. Council. Anybody?
I like going last again, so if somebody else has something to say, that'd be great.
Want to go last?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Robert, you can go first.
I'm, I'm happy to kick us off. On the proposed hotel, uh, the request is to change the height restriction from 40 feet to 65 feet. If we make that change to 65 feet, does an additional 15% waiver still apply? Or is the 65 feet a hard, hard cap?
Those 65 feet would be the hard cap.
And I'm not sure who's best to answer this, but I've, uh, you know, heard conversation that we need to go to 65 feet because essentially that's what the industry standard requires now. If we did something, something less, we, we couldn't attract a hotel. It wouldn't be profitable. Is anyone able to, to confirm that? Or, or, you know, can we, can we have a hotel in Timneth at 40 feet?
I'm not a hotel hospitality expert. But I have been for seven, the better part of 17 years pitching Timneth as a location that would be great for hospitality. And I can tell you that this is the only, so, so far, the only hospitality developer that's been interested. And it's, it's a four story hotel. It's a newer concept called a dual brand hotel. So it's two different hotels in one. It's a Hawthorne Suites and two floors and a La Quinta in two floors. So the reason they want four floors is though they can have both brands within the hotel. Most of the hotel chains that I know are closer to that 65 feet. And a lot of it is because the, not necessarily the, the height of the floors, but also the elevator has to go up above that fourth floor, a full story. And the, the heights of the different floors within the hotel push it up along with the pitch of the roof. So I'm not sure if a three story hotel could be profitable, but the only one, the only group that's interested wants to do a four story hotel, if that answers the question.
Carolyn, maybe I can ask, ask you this. There's been commentary about, about the brand of the hotel and that, you know, folks have, have different thoughts about that. And in terms of us evaluating this proposal, is the brand of the hotel something that, that we could lawfully consider?
Carolyn White or Carolyn Stoffel?
I was Karen Stoffel, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, no, when you're looking at the application, you need to look at the fiber view criteria that are set forth in the staff report. And you are looking at the variance request in terms of height. You're not at this time looking at any particular, even if they have a vendor in mind that is not part of the application. And you cannot make a determination based on your value, value of any particular end user, as long as the end user complied with whatever requirements were put in place.
Appreciate that. Carolyn White brought up the topic of revenue. And I'm curious if anyone has any expertise specific to, uh, storage facilities. You know, what, what would that revenue potentially look like? Is, is it something to be significant for the town or?
Again, I'm not a, uh, storage developer either. I'm good at selling land, but not developing storage. I don't believe that the town revenue will be significant off of the, from the development of the, the storage. The rental is not, is the main income for the, the storage. They'll sell some boxes and some tape, but I think it'll be fairly de minimis.
There'll be no sales tax or anything, Robert. So, so not profitable for the town.
Right. Or not much, let's go there.
So I've looked through the original PD overlay amendment. And I noticed that a lot of things have been removed from that, including, you know, window requirements and stuff like that. When we're talking about bringing in a storage facility, um, that can mean a lot of different things. And I guess my concern is, what does that mean in this case?
Sure, no, it's a good question and, and one in which this is the PD overlay that will allow for it to be lawfully zoned. Carolyn will kick me because I'm speaking like I know what I'm talking about here, but it'll just, it's lawfully zoned. It will then go through a site plan process, uh, within the town that the town will then have the ability to review the elevations that are submitted, the site plan that is submitted. And, um, as we mentioned at planning commission, we have a architectural design guideline that Ladera is finalizing right now. They'll have to go through that as well and get our approval. So, you know, the, the storage unit right now is about 90,000 square feet. It will be three stories and because it sets back off of the, the roundabout, right now, the design kind of shows it stepping back. And I think it'll have a very unique architectural look compared to just a box. So that is the intent I, I met with the hotel or the apartment. See if I can get the use rights, the storage developer yesterday, and we talked about this and they're aware of our design guidelines. I've shared it with them, even though it's not finalized. And I believe when it comes before you, it will be a unique, uh, architectural type and go through your process.
Big picture, the idea behind a PD overlay is that, uh, you take the project as a whole and you're going to achieve a greater public good by disregarding or, or amending your underlying zoning land use code requirements and things like that, right?
Yeah, and Carolyn did a much better job eloquently speaking to it. Ladera is going to have a lot of different use types. It's going to be a puzzle that we're trying to fit together and the PD overlay will have to kind of evolve with the puzzle pieces that we're trying to put, put in place to create this unique place and innovative design. But yeah, the, the base layer of everything we start with is the PD overlay. And it's, it's very common to, in a project like this, uh, have a PD overlay that evolves over time to meet the uses. Because not everything we can envision or the town can envision, we know of today. You know, tomorrow morning I'll get a phone call and somebody will want to change something. And then I'll call Kevin and irritate him like I usually do, so.
I'm, I'm just playing devil's advocate here and please walk with me through this. But a, a storage facility, um, in many ways is a landfill where people eventually come and, and get their stuff later. And I'm asking, you know, from the, the public benefit perspective, what is the public benefit of putting a storage facility right in the middle of kind of our prime regional commercial area versus having the storage facility, you know, somewhere a little, little more removed?
Sure, Kevin, is there any way to put this site plan up? And it, it's something we've wrestled with, you know, and looked at. The, the northeast corner of the roundabout is, is kind of an awkward piece. You know, it's got the bite taken out of it for the roundabout. It's bordered on two sides with open space in the, in the spuds piece. And then it sits kind of behind the Costco, the back of the Costco. So it, because it's got a unique location, we actually thought this was a, a really unique and good place to put it, place it. I don't know what one of them. Like the very first one, Kevin, sorry. There we go. Thank you, Carolyn. Yes. Not even legal expert, but an I, an AV expert as well. So, um, yeah, the way that, that the, the piece sits back behind Costco, it's actually, we believe a very good land use. Some, I met Steve 15 years ago and he worked at a very highfalutin land use firm. And they would tell you this is good land use. And so over 15 years, he's beat it into my head to try to do good land use like this. So, um, and we're under contract with them. They're doing their due diligence. We, we're not sure if they're gonna, you know, ultimately close, but we actually think this is a great place for this. And it will create a unique entry into Ladera. Everyone's got a different opinion on it, but it is a unique piece of ground and the way it sits there will be difficult for other, you know, retail users ultimately, like an office building. I think this is what it will look like as an office building with very few parking spaces around it. So Carolyn wanted to mention something as well.
If I may, mayor council member, the one thing I would add to that is, um, the whole point of this sort of exercise is that this project is to be evaluated as an integrated whole, not, you know, sort of piecemeal use by use. And you might ask that question about this one particular use or, or whatever. And maybe self-storage in and of itself doesn't appear to you as a very desirable use for the town. But I think the point as Grant was trying to make is in a large land, uh, area like this, the way that all of the roads and streets and everything lays out, there are going to be some properties that are less functional than others for different purposes. And this particular one is not going to be the, the showiest corner of Maine and Maine for the best, highest and best retail use. It's not where the hotel wants to be. It's not even where an office wants to be. So it actually, given that we already have a ton of open space here, this is actually a really highly functional contributive land use to put in this location where it has the least potential impact on the surrounding uses and can, you know, spread out to its heart's content.
Appreciate the perspective, thank you. Kevin or, or anyone else that, that has thoughts on this? I want to talk about the care center. And when the PD overlay was first proposed, I reviewed it. And I didn't know, uh, who the proposed user was. We now have letters and testimony that, that give us some insight to that. I am wondering if something fell through and the proposed user didn't come here. What other types of facilities might we be opening this up to?
With that, there would be, you know, some acute care, um, some, uh, other types of outpatient facilities where if you get a knee surgery, you can, uh, go and get, uh, you know, go to a rehab facility to where, you know, you are staying overnight, some things like that. It would generally, you know, that's what the intent from the definition is for facilities like that. That would fall within that and respite care would fall within that as well. But from staff standpoint, it would kind of, it would more generally open up to some of those, you know, shorter term care facilities after you have a surgery or, you know, something like that.
And our definition, revised definition, proposed definition does mention under 18. So, you know, so it has to be like a rehab facility for, for youth, right?
Yep.
Are we opening ourselves up to the possibility of a youth detox facility?
Uh, we could, I don't know if that would be, you know, a facility that would want to come to this area. We've never had any inquiry for anything like that. But it, it could be a potential with this change.
There is no youth detox facility in Larimer County presently, and that is something that there is a high need for. I, I just offer that. As currently written, might this definition open us up for a youth, a short-term mental health facility?
Uh, I would have to go back and look at the definition specifically, but it could open up for a, a mental health facility as well.
What about a youth, short-term foster care or group home?
We have group home listed as a different use within our land use code table, um, instead of a care facility like this. So that would fall under that category and off the top of my head, I don't know the allowances. So that would fall under that category and off the top of my head, I don't know the allowances for that, but we do have group home that is, that is listed differently.
Okay. And uh, you know, I, I've just kind of brainstormed, but, 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 but before I knew who the user was, I was trying to project who, who might this be? Uh, another one that came to mind is, is a, you know, youth temporary detention facility.
Uh, I would have to look a little bit closer into our, into our definition and land use code, but a care facility, if it would fall underneath the definition of the care facility, it, it could open up for that as well.
My perspective here is um, I am wholly in favor of the proposed user. But I do have concerns that as we've written this, we may be opening ourselves up to things that may not be as popular in the future. So I, so I offer that perspective. Can you talk a little bit about uh, the revision to one A, three A? That adds the language, this is dealing with the trees, uh, trees determined to be preserved and why this change makes sense?
Once you flip up, there's that you gave earlier.
Yep. That's what I'm getting to.
All the amendments were.
Yep.
If you flip that up, I think that'll cover all the rest of the discussion.
Yep. Um, so uh, the, the one A, three E, so originally on the original PD overlay, the original code requirement was removed. Uh, the reason why it was removed uh, was with um, if you kind of think about it now, the, where the White Soul uh, roundabout is, used to be a pond um, south of Svetsovzy Road. Uh, there was a lot of volunteer cottonwoods and other trees that had popped up with that. And then even on where the floor and the core site is, um, so the, to extend White Soul and do any type of road improvement, a lot of those trees had to be removed to make those improvements happen. Uh, this actually brings back um, generally to the original criteria of preserving um, you know, the existing trees that are out there, that would be out there. It's just kind of bringing it back to that point as I mentioned. Currently on, I'm gonna call it the southwest side of the site. There's uh, you know, a few trees that are up there north of the Connell pit. Those would generally be the only trees that are existing to the site um, at this point. All the other trees that are now in the site were done by the development floor and core or with the White Soul improvements. So this just kind of brings back to um, the um, you know, determining what trees would need to be preserved, if any, that, that do come about.
I suppose you could read it one way, both ways. One way is this makes it easier to get rid of trees. Another way is that it protects trees. How are you reading it?
So the way that, the way that we view this is that it's, you know, determined to be preserved. So it's, you know, at that point, it's a uh, point of first understanding what trees are there that need to be preserved and then having the ability to preserve those trees. Not a way to really remove those trees. Like I'd mentioned, um, the previous PD overlay did have the removal uh, of this criteria. You know, to allow for the ability to remove the trees that were needed for the extension of White Soul and uh, some of those other ones. But that's where we as staff, when we got this back for a re-review, uh, we wanted to at least bring in the ability to um, look at um, you know, the areas that have the trees. And like I mentioned, it's a very small area now to see if those trees you know, are tended to be uh, preserved uh, with it, you know, with the site development that does come along.
So this was staff attempting to implement the ability to review this as opposed to just having the developer without review.
Yep.
Bulldoze them. Is that the intent? And then uh, my last question, I'll, I'll move on, deals with the, the tree caliper size. This seems like a larger issue. I'm wondering why we're addressing it through a PD overlay and not uh, a land use code amendment or, or something like that. This is not gonna be a problem that's unique to Ladera.
It is not. Um, so with land use code amendments, we've kind of, as staff, we've kind of gotten to a point of doing two a year. Kind of one at the beginning and one in the middle um, of the year um, to where we need to. This would be something that we would look at for our land use code uh, in general, uh, to see if we need to make any changes since this is kind of ahead of any land use code amendment that we have. That's why they're trying to capture it within this. Uh, but you are correct that the tree caliper size is uh, is becoming a much larger concern. You know, not even just townwide, but it is statewide. We've had some developers, you know, reach out to us to say that to get to that size of a tree, they have to get up into Washington or Oregon. Or states away to have it trucked in and that's not really, you know, feasible from that standpoint. But you know, and a lot of the nurseries are struggling to get trees that get to growing to that size. Just because there's a lot of demand for trees, they don't have the ability to continue to grow trees within their nurseries to get that. So this is just out ahead of that, but we will be looking at that for a land use code amendment when we come up for one.
I'm imagining that landscaping is something that's probably at least a year out. Is this something that if we chose to um, amend and not include this in here, could still be addressed through? Sounds like what's a likely land use code amendment?
Yeah, and, and this is um, you know, it is a, they shall be two and two and a half. You know, we can, as staff, if we get to a point to where we see that larger deciduous trees do start to come back in the larger caliper, we can uh, request that they do the larger caliper. This just allows them to get to more of what is the standard that's out there available.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
Just two questions. Um, this kind of piggybacks off what uh, Robert said. So what is the evaluation process for determining what will be preserved?
For tree wise?
Yeah, for.
So with that, um, when we get into plating, uh, part of the plat requirement is to basically do an existing conditions of the site of, you know, trees, grading, things like that, uh, to where we see what trees are, you know, and other you know, items are out on the property uh, that may be. So when we review a plat, we look at to see, you know, what existing trees or things like that are out there based on what plat it is. Um, you know, we would also at that point be doing uh, an understanding of what is the species of tree that's out there. If it's, you know, kind of the volunteer cottonwoods, those, you know, aren't the best tree species to be out there. If it's Russian olives, things like that. But like I mentioned on this site, there are very few trees and they're more of the volunteer type that are on the southwest. From that standpoint to where they would, you know, not really survive or they would not be worth keeping on the property like this. So from this specific area, the forty-six, you know, acres, there's, like I mentioned, there's just maybe a handful of those trees and then all the other ones are new trees that have been brought in with the development.
Thank you. On review criteria four, uh, talked about the traffic study and I think Carolyn mentioned this, I think, was that traffic study down in two thousand twenty-one? Is that right?
Yeah, that traffic study was originally done and um, after the annexation with the minor subdivision of the property.
From your perspective, do you think there's been any significant changes in the industry or town since that traffic study was completed?
Not since that study was completed in my mind and any proposals that come in will have to do a compliance letter that either they're in compliance with what was in that study or if they're proposing something different, how it impacts that study.
Look, Luke, can I segue into the, um, I, I would like, I think I'd like to put on the record that traffic study was not done by the town, but by a third party. Is that correct?
That is correct.
You want, dude, why don't you say who the name is? Maybe you won't.
There's too many. I want to, Kimley Horn, correct? All right. I, I have a different one in front of me, so I'm gonna know it wasn't that. So Kimley Horn was the, their traffic consultant that did that report.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead to Luke, I'm sorry.
That's what I've got. Thank you, Eric.
Brad? What does the uh, traffic look like around the storage center and hotel compared to other typical regional commercial type of uses? Visitors a day.
We can have their traffic engineer uh, on that, but from hours, from staff standpoint, the traffic generated from a storage facility is minimal, like handful of cars in the peak hours compared to retail. You know, you got few people that show up in the mornings, midday and evenings, dropping off stuff, picking up, you know, not, not too many. So traffic generation would be smaller, but more than happy to elaborate on that.
You made the trip here.
I concur.
Elaborate.
Yeah, right. Thank you. I appreciate it. I was just gonna say I concur, but um, I'm Curtis Rowe with Kimley Horn Associates. My address is sixty-two hundred South Syracuse Way in Greenwood Village. And Kevin described that well. Um, self-storage is about one of the smallest, lowest traffic generators per building area. Um, that's available, that's out there. So uh, change from commercial to the storage facility significantly reduces the traffic volume. It's, it's roughly five to ten percent of the total of what a commercial um, could generate in that site.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, and then Kevin, um, you know, there was mentioned in the pack and numerous environmental studies. I know we talked with Colorado Parks and Wildlife about every development that, that comes through. Has any opinion from Colorado Parks and Wildlife been expressed about impacts of the surrounding area from, from any of these proposals tonight?
Not about the sketch planner, the PD overlay. Um, they did submit um, based on uh, their preliminary plat. That's currently in review. Uh, Parks and Wildlife at that point generally said that, you know, this, the Ladera site is not part of their high priority habitat area, but it's surrounded by the high priority habitat areas. Um, and that, you know, best practices be, you know, used uh, when development does come forward for impacts and things that may occur. But they haven't had any specifics to, you know, the height of, you know, the hotel or anything else like that.
Okay. Then I guess I'll just make a, I'll finish up with a comment here, just uh, reminding everyone that we have a legal criteria that's been shown a few times tonight. It dictates how we vote. It's not, I'm not allowed to vote on what I feel about the brand of hotel. I'm not allowed to vote based on what I feel about a specific type of business. The legal criteria for getting a PD amendment overlay is, has been described as a unified character with an adverse effect on surrounding properties being mitigated or, or identified. Adequate utilities, if there's any uh, substantial impairment to the use or development of surrounding properties, any substantial traffic issues. And then if this creates a more efficient development, it may contain innovative or creative development idea, uh, ideas. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that, you know, in the end, this isn't our land. We don't decide uh, up here as owners, what's going to happen on it. We follow the rules that have been laid out and that includes the rules with, with how we're going to make judgments on, on any uh, PD overlay amendments that we're going to discuss.
That's correct. And I'll add on to that, that the underlying permitted uses were identified and were used by right under the initial underlying zoning. And there's no requested change to what the permitted uses are and that a storage unit would be one of those permitted uses.
Thanks, Kevin. I guess I'll, one, one last comment on that. You know, our land use code defines regional commercial as essentially a broad mix of uses. It includes uh, medical offices, amenities and includes light industrial uh, as, as part of the actual language that's in there. It's tough for me to think of a lighter industrial use than a storage center, uh, when I look through our land use code and see what is, what is legally defined as an industrial use. All their options are oil drilling, manufacturing centers of various kinds. An, an indoor climate controlled storage center seems like a light industrial use uh, that would uh, bring some level of balance. You know, I, I look at all these pictures of the, of the overlay, of the overlaying site. I see Costco next door with a parking lot jammed with cars. And it seems to me it wouldn't be such a terrible thing if the businesses immediately next to it have a wider traffic footprint. And I think that's the best solution in a lot of ways to a lot of our traffic issues while also bringing in amenities and businesses that we like is just a balanced approach. Uh, and so that's uh, that's what I have.
Three and a half years, I'm gonna go off the reservation and uh, go about this at a whole different view. The amendment for the care center is something that this town needs. I want to live in a town that's kind. And if you think about Timnas and what we have, we don't have a single organization that is kind to our residents from the standpoint of the underserved and the disadvantaged. Respite Care is a leader internationally on care for those with Asperger's, those with uh, autism, those that have cerebral palsy. And they're a leader on it, which will, which will give us a star that says, we are a community that cares, that we are a community that reaches out, that we are a community that embraces people that are disadvantaged. And um, because, and it, think about it, we do not have a single organization in a town of Timnas that provides social services. Not a single one. This would be our first one. And so to me, we need to show we're kind. And we're kind all the time. You know, I take my grandkids out to the park and there's seven or eight moms and two or three dads. And everybody's helpful and they're watching each other's kids. And I mean, it's just a kind, kind community. But we don't have anything overtly to show on that. And to me, having a care facility, whether it be respite or anybody, having a care facility there and show what we are, that we are a kind community. I mean, we've got more net worth in our community than almost all of the United States. And to not sit there and give some of that back to people in need, I think we're being, we're, we're hurting ourselves. We're, we're tarnishing our hearts. And so um, this is, this is an amendment that makes sense. It's why we have a, a use code and why we do PD overlays so that the little exceptions that come out, we can sit there and facilitate and put in our, our town. So to me, the uh, care center, which, you know, in the, I think is designed for respite care is something that is crucial to our hearts and our wellbeing.
Before you proceed to a vote, um, I know you're still asking questions, but I also do want to, there were a couple of comments along the lines in the public comment session that did relate, one related to respite care, one related to Ladera generally. So I'd like to incorporate into the record any comments that were made in the public comment session that related to the Ladera development or this proposal as well. So we're gonna incorporate those. There were also some written public comments that were a part of your board packet that are also a, a part of the public record on this matter.
All right. Thanks for letting me go last. They cover a lot of it. Um, so I'm gonna go briefly through some of, through each piece there and kind of my thoughts on it. The whole part about the trees, I feel like we've kind of covered that and um, I certainly understand the rationale for wanting to change some of that. And um, perhaps like Robert mentioned, maybe down the road, we look at what we need to do to make more permanent changes. So that one I, I feel pretty good about. Um, as far as the buffer one, I think that makes sense with what our growth management area, what that's all zoned as. So I feel, feel like that's pretty good. Um, with the care center, um, I personally know some people who use respite care and I hear only positive things about that. To kind of piggyback on what Robert was saying earlier, um, and Carolyn, this might be a question for you. Are, are we allowed to say yes to the amendment, but base it on who they are telling us is going in there? So that if, for example, respite care, something fell through, it would revert back to the original?
So you can tie the change to a particular end user. If you wanted to make this more narrow, you would have to find a different way to rephrase that, that changed condition, which changes it from allowing overnight care of twenty-four hours to the fourteen days. To say, you know, you allow fourteen days for a To say, you know, you allow 14 days for a particular type of overnight care and try to be more specific in defining what type of overnight care would be permitted.
Okay. Cause I, I don't know if that's what Robert was getting at or not, but I think like prior to knowing what this was, there are other uses that would fall under this. And some, without knowing what those are, I would always, I'd be a little bit hesitant to say yes, but knowing what we know, I, I feel good about that. But I don't know if we could word it in a way that, you know, it would go revert back if, if it's not respite care or something.
I think there would also be a possibility to limit that change to just one lot. Would that be correct, Kevin?
You, you could limit that care center definition change to that specific lot that they're proposing in their preliminary plat. Just as the floor area ratio and height has been done. If that's a concern, you could specifically tie that to that lot for something that like that, even though that lot is intended for the care facility, but just to kind of button that up, you could do that.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to have the applicants, I think, Kevin.
Because she may have told me something different.
Okay. So we're going to have the applicants representatives come up and address that point as to how this could be addressed.
Thank you, Mayor and Carolyn. Very confusing to have two Carolins in the room. That never happens to me. So I, I'd like to, if I may, just for the record, state the applicant's position on a couple of the things that you mentioned. So
Yes, please.
It, it is my understanding that as written today, the proposal to allow for the 14 days is not limited to a single parcel. But if you wanted to change it to do that, that would be acceptable to the applicant. Because, and, and the, and the second thing I want to say about that is just like the town wants to be thoughtful about what types of care providers fit within this particular location, so does the applicant. And right now their intention is to partner with the respite care facility that you've heard from and heard about tonight. And even though approving this amendment could theoretically allow for other types of care providers to come to Timneth, certainly it's not the applicant's intention to do that. And if they did, they'd come talk to the town about it. So hopefully that'll help put your mind at ease just a little bit about that. And so, you know, we, we could monkey around with trying to refine the definition of that use. Then what we're really doing is straying outside of what we've proposed in our application and actually trying to limit the uses beyond what is limited today. And I think that could get a little messy. So I just want to state the applicant's intentions for the record and suggest that it's certainly the applicant's commitment that we're going to come back to the town if something falls through. And this is not the end user that they intend to work with.
I certainly appreciate that, but from my point of view, what I'm doing here would allow that. So I, I feel like I have to take that role of saying yes, but if I'm telling you, you can, you don't technically have to come back to us. I'm just trying to protect, protect what we're doing here based on that, which I very, very much understand that that is their intention. We just have to be careful with what we allow or don't allow, I guess.
I might add that one reason why I am leery of trying to draft that type of language on the fly, and I suspect your council may be also, is because depending on what type of use you might be contemplating excluding, there of course are federal laws like the Americans with Disabilities Act that protects certain types of care facilities. And we would need to, it would, it would take some deep thought to draft something that would pass muster and address your concerns at the same time.
Yeah, I'm not trying to exclude. It would be more like just come back to us again, like you're coming back to us now. The other ones are related to the height. I appreciate hearing about, you know, the hotels, what's around there. I know they're building a hotel right off Mulberry right now. I believe that's a, a four story. And I know when I drive up to that, it, anytime I see something like that off the highway, it seems to fit in off the highway. Question about the floor ratio. So I understand based on what you said earlier, 0.5 would be 50% of the space, which totally makes sense to me. So if something is 1.55, explain how it can be over 100% of the space.
You go vertical.
Go vertical. Okay, perfect.
So even, even though on that, you know, example of a 10,000 square foot lot, you could build five, you know, 5,000 square feet. That doesn't have to be a one-story building.
Okay.
So you could do a two-story building of 2,500 square feet.
On each floor.
On each floor to get to that point. So yeah, you get, you have to go vertical to get to that higher floor area ratio.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And I think that's all I have.
Okay.
I have one quick clarification question for you. When Planning Commission recommended the condition of approval, they, their, their approval, they recommended that the north side of Lot 1, Block 2 tree planting size remain unchanged to meet the current code requirements. Is that a recommended condition of approval?
That, I was going to bring that up. That, that can be if council wanted to go that direction that, from that standpoint, yeah.
So right now, the resolution states that the approval would be with two conditions, and that would be the first condition, which was the condition recommended by Planning Commission that the north side of the property remain at the current diameter. And so if that's not a condition you want to approve it with, we could strike that from the resolution.
What was the second condition?
Oh, just that we could make minor modifications as needed to finalize the documents.
Okay. Kevin, did you have anything more you wanted to say?
I'm good unless you guys have any more questions.
Let's, let's just sort of pick apart stuff here for just a little bit before I take it in. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six amendments. I thought we had seven.
Technically seven. It's two of them are floor.
The two floor deals. Okay, great. So let, let's just do sort of a hand comment, whatever, vote here for. Does anybody have any exceptions to the suggestion that staff's bringing to make the amendments on the PDA, PD overlay with the amendment of the change that they proposed for the trees along the warehouse, whatever. Yeah, along the north side. So
My thought is I'm, I'm not going to hold this up on it, but if I were to do it myself, I would mix this and address it in the land use code, just generally.
The, the, uh, trees.
Yeah. And I, I would actually address both tree issues through the land use code. I, I think they're broader issues that will apply to every developer. I don't think if we got rid of it, it would impact this development. And I think it's a problem that probably needs to be solved. If I were to do it myself, that's how I would do it. If folks disagree, I, I won't vote against the rest of it.
I, I'm neutral on the trees, whatever we go with that. And I, I think I said everything earlier. So other than that, and even that care center, that wouldn't hold me back if we don't do, you know, don't change anything on that.
I'm good with everything. I, if, if we want to talk about the height situation, again, I'm fine with sort of having a more discussion on the height of the building. But other than that, I, I feel good about everything.
I think generally what's being proposed here is appropriate for a regional commercial version of the, the end users being proposed. I like trees, not just neutral on them. I don't know if I, don't know if I'm fully hugging them, but maybe a, maybe a side around kind of, kind of deals, but, but, but yeah, I'm good with the with what's proposed as well as the, the conditions from the planning commission.
Luke?
Yeah, I, I'm good with what's being proposed here. And I appreciate the staff taking the time to put the review criteria forward. So thank you. I'm, I would go with Robert's, Robert on this and say, we, we probably just need to change the whole tree thing altogether. But I won't vote against it at all.
You know, I've never, I think I got a gathered of where we are. I've never proposed a, a proposal before because I wanted the council to do it. Can I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
Okay. I, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion just to sort of push this along. And that is I make a motion to approve ordinance number 13, series 2023, in ordinance for the Ladera Plan Development Overlay Amendment with the changes suggested by the PNZ.
Excellent. And that's already written into the resolution. That's part, or the, excuse me, the ordinance is part of the packet. So that's not a new condition. That's already part of the ordinance.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And then a discussion?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I'm happy to go first or wait, whatever.
Go ahead. By all means.
First of all, I support the hotel. I, I think Timneth would benefit greatly from a hotel. I think the regional commercial zoning is what's appropriate. And I think that ultimately in that location, the, the height variance is, is reasonable. The storage facility, if I look at it by itself, I'm not in love with it. But when I look at it in the larger picture of the development as a whole, I appreciate Brett's point that it is a low traffic impact use. And so that actually could be of public benefit. I'm putting my trust in staff and the additional review process and, and the developers and their designers that this is one of those very attractive storage facilities and, and not some of those that, that come to mind. With respect to the care facility, I am absolutely in favor of enabling respite care to go in there. I'm, I'm with you, Mayor. It's a great chance for Timneth to, to show some heart. Ideally, I think our definition could be tweaked. And without making reference to this particular organization, the care, the term respite care is a common term in the industry. Respite is defined as providing or being temporary care in relief of a primary caregiver. And I suspect that this definition could be tweaked in, in two weeks in a way that enables that use, but does not go, go any further. If I were to do this myself, I would table this for two weeks and button that down. But if this does go to a vote today, I, I won't hold it up on that basis.
I, I agree with that more the respite care with lowercase as opposed to respite care with uppercase is definitely a common term. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
Carolyn, before we keep, keep going along, do you have comments on to what both Robert and Lisa said?
Yes, I definitely, we, you do have the option of tabling this and continuing this until the next council meeting or even two council meetings out. I am confident that I could work with the applicant's attorney, that we could revise that definition to come up with a narrow definition in two weeks. And yes, respite care, yeah.
Could we pass a resolution subject to you and Carolyn agreeing to it? The def, I, I, Robert said it very clear. And I think the idea of respite is a good narrowing of this whole thing without maybe going against Disabilities Act.
Kevin, could you pull that, pull that one slide up again? That has the definition, please.
And so I'm fine, being that all we're doing is changing to adding in a respite care piece to that definition. I'm fine with passing this subject to you wordsmithing, just like we say minor wording. I, I think that's a minor wording to assigning to both Carolyn and to Carolyn Staffel. And if they can't come to an agreement, that it comes back to the council.
Yes. So I think that you would be adding a condition of approval that the modification from 24 to 40, from 24 hours to 14 days be limited to respite care, overnight care providers, right? And yes, in a lowercase. And we could, yes, we could work on the exact language of that. I'm comfortable with that being a condition of approval.
Go off the reservation again. Leanne, do you see any issues with that? Okay. So if, if my two colleagues here agree, I, I'd like to put what you just said into my motion.
Okay. So then we need a motion to amend the motion. To add a condition of
I make a motion to amend the motion.
To add a condition of approval that the modification in the, allow days of overnight care be limited to respite care providers.
What she said.
Second.
All right. Brett, do you have anything to say?
I'll just add, again, based on the, the legal criteria of this vote, I can't identify any adverse impacts to the surrounding developments or traffic issues caused by what we're looking at tonight. It is my expectation as well that the aesthetic standards will apply to, to all the buildings, whether it's the hotel or the, to make it a nice storage center. I need, I need places, a place to store Robert's Pearls of Wisdom. So it needs to be adequate quality for that. And so I'll be voting to approve this.
Before I get to you, Luke, I, I, I will make a couple of comments. I've done probably 40 financial plans for hotels. And there is a magic number and it is the lowest that you could possibly make it profitable is three stories. And I didn't want to throw that in because I didn't think it should be part of the discussion, but that is what's going on there. And then the second thing is it'd be nice to have a hotel in town where I can have my relatives show up instead of having to go all the way down to Embassy Suites or something else. Okay. Last of my comments. Go ahead.
Yeah, based on the review criteria, I'm in favor of this.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Ordinance number 13, series 2023, in ordinance for the Ladera Plan Development Overlay Amendment as amended.
And just Mayor, I, I believe we approved the amendment. I believe we still need to vote on the, on, on your original motion.
Okay. So are we voting for the original motion now?
Okay. So now you're voting for the original motion as amended.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. My head's going to hurt by the end of tonight. Resolution number 47, series 2023, a resolution approving Ladera Sketch Plan. Kevin Kobel.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is the Ladera Sketch Plan Proposal. Owner Connell LLC, applicant is Galloway. So just to kind of also touch base on this as well, this is the first step in the minor subdivision process. The sketch plan, which is to be, you know, conceptual layout of the, of the development and what the, kind of the intended land uses, trails, open space and other things like that are. So this sketch plan is for the purpose of developing seven planning areas, which will be developed with commercial lots within the 45 acres of the remaining 64 acres of the Ladera subdivision. And as Carolyn White had mentioned previously, the remaining 19 acres are the floor and decor lot and the Whitesill right of way. These planning areas will range from roughly 1.78 acres to 9.59 acres for commercial development, along with 18 acres for open space. The planning areas will then be further defined into commercial lots at the preliminary plat stage. And then the open space will consist of generally a natural open space due to the flood plain that's on the east side of the site. And then, but that will include trails and then connection to existing trails and then trails for the future. That 18 acres of open space represents 28% of the entire That 18 acres of open space represents 28% of the entire 64 acres, which exceeds the regional commercial requirement of 25%. A neighborhood meeting was held for this sketch plan on the 9th of February. Roughly 65 residents attended and their and the concerns were noted in the observation report that is attached to the packet. Planning Commission reviewed this application on the 18th of July and recommended approval to the Town Council. The staff has reviewed this sketch plan against the town criteria. It conforms with the zoning district of the regional commercial and then the comprehensive plan of regional commercial. It does represent a functional system of land use and is consistent with the code. The utility and transportation is designed as adequate. As Eric had mentioned, there is an existing traffic study and any future development would have to have compliance letters that it complies with that original traffic study. And then at this time, the negative impacts on adjacent land uses would be the increase in traffic, but that traffic would be mitigated with future improvements to existing road systems. With that, I will turn it over to Carolyn this time. There you go.
Right. Thank you very much, Mayor, Town Council, Town Staff, Members of the Public, once again, Carolyn White on behalf of the applicant Connell LLC for the Ladera Project. And I apologize if just a few of my comments are going to be repetitive, but of course, this is technically a separate hearing. So we have to make sure it contains all of the required information. You know where Ladera is located already. This slide just depicts for you again that same 48 points, 48.84 acres. And I've explained, you know, why that's different from the original 60 acres that was already, that was previously annexed. 48.84 acres, it includes the PD overlay, exact same area as the PD overlay and a portion of Weitzel Street excluding floor and decor and the portion of Weitzel Street that was already developed. And so just again, to kind of put this in context with the overall Ladera project, on the far left column in gray, that's the two previously approved applications related to this, the annexation and the original PD overlay for the 63 acres. The applications before you tonight, the PD overlay and the sketch plan is in green in the middle column. And future applications that will be coming forward are the preliminary plat for this property, an annexation for the rest of the property, a rezoning and planned development overlay for the rest of the property, the 180 acres. And then eventually, actually, what's not on here is there will be a final plat for this property and there will be site plans for this property. And, and we included this in our presentation because one of the questions we got at the neighborhood meeting, at the community meeting was about the overall process and where we stand in the process and what exactly is a sketch plan? And so we've talked a little bit about that. But you know, the sketch plan is one step in a three-step process of how these, how this land gets subdivided into individual parcels that can be individually sold, individually developed and individually site planned. So at the sketch plan process, we're really talking about planning areas. We're not actually formally dedicating easements and establishing lot lines, but we're sketching out roughly, what are the major planning areas? What are the use types within all the uses that are allowed under the PD overlay and the regional commercial zoning? Which types of uses do we think are going to be located in which planning area? And that's what's depicted on this graphic. And in a moment, I'm going to invite Jenny Romano from Stack, excuse me, from Galloway. Sorry, I just gave you a different job, Jenny, to give you a brief overview of what's in the sketch plan. And then just like before, I'm going to come back and link it to the criteria. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Members of the Council. Again, my name is Jenny Romano, civil engineer with Galloway, address 5500 Greenwood Plaza Boulevard in Greenwood Village. The sketch plan proposes to create seven planning areas, all of which will remain as regional commercial zoning. All the proposed principal uses, uses, excuse me, in the sketch plan are permitted in the land use code as well as the regional commercial zone district. The principal use on Planning Area One, which is what we've discussed as the storage use, will be industrial. Planning Areas Two through Seven will be principal use of business, commercial and/or retail, while Planning Area Four will be a principal use of open space. The density on each planning area ranges from 0.25 to 1.55, which is in line with the other zoning districts in your code. The sketch plan shows the open space and tree lawns along the public right of way, as you see on the screen. Let's see. The required open space requirement is 20%. We are exceeding that by 2.6 times that requirement. And we have 53% of this property will be open space. And they'll, as discussed earlier, there will also be additional open space for Ladera provided in future phases of development. All right, now I'll turn it back over to Carolyn to discuss how this application complies with the criteria and land use code.
There are four criteria in the code for approval of a sketch plan. They're up here on the, on the screen. I won't read them to you. I'll mention once again, the two letters that we submitted that are in the packet in which we go through and analyze each of these criteria relative to the sketch plan, as well as the PD overlay, which you already approved in, in some greater detail. A couple that I want to highlight specifically for you tonight has to do with the consistency with the comprehensive plan and how this sketch plan helps further the goals in the comprehensive plan. So on this slide, we've pulled out a couple of the key goals listed in the comprehensive plan, such as balancing large-scale economic generators and neighborhood-oriented local businesses to create a supported small-town economy. And as you can see, the way that those planning areas are broken up, there are some larger lots, there are some smaller lots. And the idea here is to create the opportunity for some larger-scale economic generators, one of which is already located there. And we've got some, some lots that are suitable for other large-scale economic generators. And we've also got some smaller lots that are more suitable for smaller types of tenants in order to try to accommodate this kind of mix of economic uses. Expansive and accessible system of parks, open space, greenway corridors, overall foundation and framework for development. And when you look back to that overall site plan that we showed you a moment ago, you can see how the idea is that we sort of have two very large open spaces on the two corners and then a network of trails and greenways connecting those two open spaces with the idea once again, that this is going to be a place that is combining all of those uses, recreational, large-scale economic, small-scale economic and some residential, all in one location. And then cement the town's exceptional quality of life, open spaces, small-town character and vibrant sense of community. I think that Grant mentioned that we're talking about in excess, amount of open space that's in excess of the minimum required. Just when you consider this phase one all by itself, of course, there are future applications and there'll be more open space as well. Overall, this will be a well-designed project that combines revenue generating uses with open space and residential uses. So you have the ability to truly live, work and play all within the single master planned area. And it all will be walkable and bikeable and interconnected. These are the land use criteria and all of these criteria are met. We can talk again about specific questions on traffic. If you would like to talk about the flow of traffic and the uses of traffic, Curtis is here, as you know, and can answer any of those specific questions. But in conclusion, the sketch plan meets all of the criteria in the code for approval of a sketch plan. We ask for your approval of it and are happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Kevin, do you have anything further?
Not unless you have any questions.
Okay. Robert.
First of all, this is a public.
Do you have any question?
First of all, we're going to open this up for public comments for the public hearing portion of this.
Okay, so public comment.
I'll open up the public hearing at 8:51. Is there anybody in the audience who would, okay?
Bill Jenkins, 5507 Sugarloaf Court. I guess I'm a little confused because the sketch plan was not in the consent agenda for last meeting. And it's not listed for public comment for tonight, and it wasn't announced for a public comment tonight. So this is actually the first reading of the sketch plan as I understand it. So I don't know how it's having a public, public comment session without announcing it or how it can be voted on in final form without prior reading. So I'm just a little confused about the procedure. I don't have any comments specifically on the sketch plan itself, other than what I submitted previously to the Planning Commission. So with that, I'm done.
Thank you. Carolyn, on the agenda, it does show public comment.
So the agenda listed a public hearing for the PD overlay amendment. Unfortunately, it was left off as the public hearing for the sketch plan. This would not typically have two readings because it is an approval by resolution as opposed to the PD overlay, which was an approval by ordinance. So that's why you saw that one have two readings because it was an ordinance instead of a resolution. So I believe when the Planning Commission met that they indicated that there was going to be a public hearing tonight, but that wasn't. Okay. So Council, you do have the option to continue this until the next council meeting, and we can remedy that issue that the agenda did not include the notice of public hearing on this specific item.
Carolyn, do you want to take that risk?
Mayor, Council, I'll just, I'll just mention normally you don't do a public hearing on resolutions. I think you decided you wanted to open it for public comment just because there's a lot of people who are interested in the Ladera project, and we certainly don't object to that. If in order to cure the lack of notice of a public hearing for this one and only time, you would like to continue it for two weeks, we can come back in two weeks.
So the sketch plan does have a public hearing requirement under the land use code, so this wasn't.
Even though it's a resolution?
Even though it's a resolution, this was intended to be set for public hearing, and that was certainly our intent as announced at the beginning of the meeting.
My, I'm looking at you guys. My, my suggestion is, is that we table it and come back in two weeks and do it the way it should be.
I would also encourage us to take any comments of anyone who's here tonight. And then we can, you know, we can continue the public hearing, we can renotice it. And that way, if anyone is here tonight and would like to make public comments, we're ready in, in that public hearing.
But we'll have public comments next, in two weeks too. We're fine. I mean, if anybody has a burning desire now instead of two weeks from now. Okay. So could I have a motion to table Resolution Number 47, series 2023?
I move to table Resolution Number 47, series 2023, a resolution approving the Ladera Sketch Plan until our next council meeting in two weeks, which I don't know the date.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Resolution Number 47, series 2023, a resolution approving the Ladera Sketch Plan has been tabled.
And the next council meeting is on August 22nd, beginning at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, so Resolution Number 48, series 2023, a resolution approving a contract with Advanced Curb Design LLC for permanent accent lighting services. Lisa.
Good evening. What you have before you is a draft contract to contract with Advanced Curb Design LLC for permanent lighting on our two municipal buildings, this building and the police building. With the addition of the police building, we were looking at what we traditionally do here. And we were looking at cost estimates for installation and takedown and the purchase of. So at that time, we decided to explore different options. A lot of other municipalities are transitioning to this permanent lighting to save on costs, to hire payback. And so we obtained four quotes, two for the more traditional lighting that we currently have on this building where it would be temporary. We put it up the beginning of the holiday season and then take it down. And then two with a more permanent lighting situation where we would keep them up year round. And then we have the flexibility to turn them off and turn them on via computer and app and so forth. We did review all of those, all of those proposals, and our recommendation is to go with Advanced Curb Design, which is the lowest of the two permanent lighting options. We can support this with the current budget, 52,600, and that would take care of these two buildings. Any questions?
Lisa, could you help me? When I looked at it, we hadn't put the numbers in it in on Thursday. Could you tell me real quick what, what putting, having installed lights were versus having advanced curb put it on?
Sure. So it's on page 358 of your packet. There's the analysis. 52,600, and it is an estimated 22-year life. We'll get a five-year warranty. And the temporary lighting, those quotes were kind of all over the place and they varied widely. As you can see, Lights of Colorado was only 3,600, and then we had another bid from Southern Exposure, which was 30,000. So big, big difference. I took the lowest and I compared them two. We would, on the high end, have a 14-year payback, but I only included this year's lowest cost of installation. The lights on this building are going to need to be replaced because they're at the end of their useful life. So I imagine we would need to purchase lights for this building either this year or next year. And I didn't take that into account.
Comments?
Go ahead. So I think you answered this, Lisa, but I was going to ask, so how was this need identified and are lights required?
They're not required, but we have traditionally done that. And Public Works identified the need, just with the growing trends of permanent lighting versus temporary lighting.
And I guess I just look at this and is, how does this really fit in, you know, with, I don't know if I'm going to use the right word, like strategic plan? How does this, how does this fit in with all the things that we're trying to do? And I'm just interested to know.
We pay every year for the installation of lights on this building and just being along the Harmony Corridor, we got pricing for the police building as well.
Thank you.
Did you get your question? Robert?
So these are the cool LED ones that you can do like different colors and 4th of July, we could do red, white and blue.
Yes.
I will tell you, I looked at several of these vendors for my own home and priced them out. The technology is really cool. And I was shocked at what the price came in at. It was a lot better than I was expecting. Just for what it's worth, I, I think it probably makes sense from a long-term perspective.
So it was a lot more or a lot less than you thought?
A lot less. Yeah, I mean, considering what it's, was going to look like to do just.
I'm glad you looked into it, Lisa. You know, I think it's great and we don't, you know, before now, we got just white lights on Christmas. You know, we could, we could do red and green one week and white the next, and we can do 4th of July, and we can do Thanksgiving. And so, you know, I like the idea of sort of being sort of state-of-the-art and, and being festive for our residents. Okay, any other comments? Do I have a motion to approve a resolution approving contract with Advanced Curb Design LLC for permanent accent lighting services?
I move to approve Resolution Number 48, series 2023, a resolution approving the contract with Advanced Curb Design LLC for permanent accent lighting services.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution for number 48, series 2023, a resolution approving contract with Advanced. contract with Advanced Curb Design LLC for permanent access lighting, passed unanimously. All right. What? We're gonna definitely take five minutes. Question is, do we take two weeks?
We, we've got momentum.
Pardon?
We've got momentum.
I'm, I'm looking at you guys. I'm ready to throw in the towel, but if four people want to keep doing this, I am happy to be here.
Maybe if we restrict Robert to two comments, then, uh.
Do you got a gag?
I'll figure out something.
I would offer these, these next three are all interrelated, and I imagine that we could knock it out without.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break. We're in resolution number forty-nine, series twenty-two-three, a resolution supporting broadband for Timnas staff report. Brian Williamson.
Thank you, Mayor. Temporarily forgot how to work the electronics in here. Um, so we have three broadband items on tonight. Um, it's been a little bit of a lengthy meeting, so I'm gonna go pretty quick through here, but I'm happy to slow down and answer any questions. I don't want there to be, um, any, any misconceptions, but I just want to kind of be appreciative of your time. You've given a lot tonight, and I want to respect that. Um, our first action item here is a broadband resolution of support. Um, that is really, um, it just demonstrates the town's commitment and investment to broadband over time. Um, this resolution recognizes the steps that Tim has taken already, um, basically compiling our, working on our master plan, um, reaching out and forming the IGA, which is the next agenda item tonight, um, and really kind of moving that ball forward. Um, it also, the resolution also certifies our status as broadband-ready for the project. Um, and this resolution doesn't really commit us to anything. It's just kind of a resolution of support, saying that this is our intention for broadband. Happy to take any questions on that.
Any comments?
I will be brief. Um, but I, I know we had work sessions on this. I know the council essentially expressed in the work session, uh, our, our commitment to, to doing broadband. Uh, but Brian, I, I really appreciate you, you bringing the specific resolution forward and, and allowing us, uh, the chance, if, if this passes to, you know, announce to the community and essentially officially say, uh, yes, we've listened to you. Uh, there's overwhelming community support for this, and, uh, it's, it's happening. It's happening in Timneth. I'm, I'm excited that we can do that here tonight. So thank you.
Yeah, I just want to comment like, uh, I, I support this, and I want to thank you for your work. I believe broadband provides, uh, proactive planning and, uh, upgrades part of our town infrastructure. Um, so I, I think that that's huge, and I, I support what Robert said, like after multiple outreaches, multiple different outlets for town, town residents to come forward on this. I think this is a good point to be at and ready to support it.
I'm excited to stream council meetings in 4K, so that's, that's where I'll go with for there.
Okay, um. Any, uh, do I have a resolution? Do I have a motion for series, I mean, resolution number forty-nine, series twenty-two-three, a resolution supporting broadband for Timnas?
And I move, uh, for approval of a resolution of support for broadband in Timneth.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, do I have a discussion?
Stand on the record.
Sorry, I'm gonna do a discussion. Um, as you all know, I am not supportive of broadband. I think we're, we're putting the cart before the horse. I think that, um, we haven't fully researched other alternatives, and I don't think we've fully researched the, uh, financial impact of broadband. Um, I'm gonna vote against this, uh, proposition, but that said, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time arguing about it. So that's where I am. All right, vote. All those four, um, resolution number forty-nine, series twenty-two-three, a resolution supporting broadband for Timneth, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Resolution number forty-nine, series twenty-two-three, a resolution supporting broadband for Timneth passes four to one. Uh, resolution number fifty, series twenty-two-three, a resolution approving an IGA with Loveland for broadband services, uh, staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this is a resolution that adopts the IGA with Loveland. Uh, their council will hear this, uh, one week from tonight on the fifteenth. Um, and so we're, we're excited about getting that timing, timing set up, and this has been, um, something that we've been working on for quite some time. I'm gonna just kind of hit the high points of the IGA, but then again, I can answer any questions that you have. Um, for, um, one thing, this is gonna generate revenue for the town. Um, we will get twenty-five percent of the gross operating revenue, um, that is received by Pulse for broadband services in our area. So anything that we fund, we will get twenty-five percent of the revenue sources for that. That's the broadband services. That's not any of the add-on packages such as TV or voice, um, because those are, those packages are included to make the, the product competitive, but not necessarily, um, generating revenue. That twenty-five percent revenue will, will be available to the town or submitted to the town basically one year after that first, um, that area gets, um, started and services available there. Then also, we have potential for future revenues, um, for leasing dark fiber or a small cell network, all those things we're kind of actively working on behind the scenes, um, but we're not quite ready to, to bring those forward yet. Um, operations, so Timoth will provide the funding to build the broadband network. Um, then the, we will control, Timoth, I shouldn't say we, but the town council will control the timing of the phases, the project costs through the capital improvement plan and the planning that happens to go along with that, and then the subsequent budget appropriations. And then within the first five years of the agreement, Timneth will fund forty percent of the service drops, and Pulse will fund anything beyond that. And then after five years, Pulse will fund a hundred percent of the service drops. So we do have the option as Timneth continues to grow, to continue to fund these broadband thing, our projects, um, and we will have the ability to get that revenue return on those new projects as well. Pulse will own and operate the network and provide all of the customer support to the subscribers. Um, because we don't have any other utilities, we're really not in a position to stand up that utility and support those, those needs. Um, and there's a minimum twenty-five-year service agreement, so Pulse will need to operate those services for a minimum of twenty-five years. Pulse will also service the town facilities, so we will be able to stream the council meetings in 4K. Um, so Pulse will provide high-speed internet to the Timneth facilities at Timneth's request. That includes our buildings, our parks, um, and then a lot of other infrastructure that we have right now, such as our traffic lights, uh, pump stations. Um, we have some road sensors that help the public works when the, when they're plowing. All those things will be able to tie into a wired fiber net, fiber network, so we'll get much better, um, communication with those thing, those, um, pieces of infrastructure. Um, the rates will be established as a bulk government services, and we'll pay them monthly, just like we would pay Comcast or any other provider. Marketing, so Pulse in the town will jointly develop branding standards for this, so it will not be Pulse City of Loveland. Um, we'll have our own kind of integrated brand for this. Um, and then Pulse will direct and control all that outreach marketing and the communications through the construction process. Um, one thing that really stood out to us was they have a very strong plan for how they communicate with the residents during that construction process. Um, and I think that's gonna be key, because we're basically gonna be working in every single residence front yard at some point, um, and making sure that they know what to expect. If they have issues, who to contact, all of those things, um, are really very well spelled out in the Pulse program. Any questions on those topics? Um, I know we've talked about some of the key points of the IGA before, um, so they shouldn't be surprising, but I think there's a lot of kind of nuance to a lot, to those. Yeah, I guess.
Are you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, if there's questions, I can.
Okay.
Have a little recap.
Questions?
You know, it's not so much a question, but, but it's a comment that, um, we did have a multi-hour work session on this, uh, and a lot more detail was provided. That's available to any member of the public who kind of wants to understand how we got here. I, uh, very much appreciate, uh, Brett's work specifically on this project. Um, I know there have been a lot of behind-the-scenes meetings and a lot of questions asked, and, uh, I, I just appreciate all the effort that's, that's gone into this. Um, you know, we ran, uh, essentially a competitive process, uh, between Pulse and Connection, the, the Fort Collins provider, and ultimately, I, I think we were put in the very fortunate position of having two excellent proposals to choose between and, uh, and Pulse, um, from the communication perspective. Um, you know, I, I think, uh, had the edge there, and I think that communication perspective is really important as, as we launch this with the town. Um, there's gonna be questions about, you know, why are we doing this neighborhood today and that neighborhood tomorrow and, and things like that. So I, I think that communication stuff, which, which Pulse, um, really demonstrated a commitment to makes, makes sense. So I thank you for, um, helping all of us understand that. I appreciate it, Brian.
Brett?
Um, I do want to emphasize one of the, the key points emphasized in the report here, and it's, it's a hammer I've been hitting for, uh, as long as we've been discussing this project, the, the being able to lease out section, you know, a dark fiber, fiber not being used for improving cellular service in town. Uh, residents want good internet, but they also want much improved cell service, and this project is the most direct thing we can do to set up the next generation of, of cellular service in town, and make it much, much better. Uh, so I think that needs to be absolutely highlighted on one of the reasons that, uh, we're doing this and, and how these agreements are, are facilitating, uh, that effort.
Do I have a motion to approve resolution number fifty, series twenty-two-three, a resolution approving an IGA with Loveland for broadband services?
Uh, I'll move to approve resolution fifty, series twenty-two-three, the resolution approving the IGA with Loveland for broadband services.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oops, I forgot to ask the questions. You guys want to do, does anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay, uh, we'll do that one more time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Uh, resolution number fifty, series twenty-two-three, a resolution approving an IGA with Loveland for broadband services passes four to one. Uh, resolution number fifty-one, series twenty-two-three, a resolution for broadband funding authorization number one.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I did have a, a key point slide at the end of the last. Thank you, Mayor. I did have a key point slide at the end of the last presentation, but but Councilmember Oxmacher and Councilmember Hansen kind of pulled all of those things together, so I just wanted to make sure that there was no no concern about that, and all of those documents for the competitive bid process are in the council packet. So if anybody wanted to go back and look at those, they're all there in the council packet. So this is now, we're talking about a resolution for funding the first phase of broadband. There are two main pieces of this funding resolution. The first one is the hundred percent design of the active network that'll be completed by Ditesco Services, and then the Phase One Construction, which will bring the feeder line from basically Tarmigan Golf Course all the way up to our Public Works Building forty-eight-hundred, where we'll be setting the hub for the Timnas network. The, so the design services scope really has a deliverable of the packages that will be required to complete this. It's the fiber design, the boring, the conduit involved, design plans. Then they'll be coordinating with both Pulse and Timith, Pulse to make sure that they're designing to the network standards, with Timith to make sure that they're locating all of the structures in reasonable places. I think we have probably a higher sense of aesthetics in some of these things. We want to make sure that we're not putting above-ground cabinets in very high-profile view corridors, you know, making sure that we're being responsible about where we're putting the infrastructure. We worked quite a bit on where to put this hub. The hub is a large ten-by-twenty precast concrete, not necessarily extremely aesthetically pleasing building. It's gonna fit very nicely inside the fence at forty-eight-hundred. So we, it's a nice central location that will serve, serve the project very well. This is the design scope map that we've been looking at for quite some time. We've broken it up into three major pieces, the green, the pink, and the blue, and those are kind of the phases of the design, but we are gonna design everything to a hundred percent to start. The reason that we're doing that is because we've seen in a couple previous instances, both with Ditesco or mainly with Ditesco, where they've seen that as you're designing and building at the same time, sometimes you need to come back and do additional construction in some of those key areas. So we want to make sure that we're getting all of that designed. We're boring in each location one time and making sure that we've got everything put together. We're also using the multipath conduit, which will allow us a lot of flexibility in those ways as well. This is an example of what that vault construction plan would be. So you can see they've already started on a Timith neighborhood, and you can see that there's a variety of vaults. The small flower pot vaults that are kind of serve the individual or paired residential units, and then some larger splitter vaults and things like that that will be distributed throughout the community. Construction Phase One, we talked about this a little bit earlier, but that's gonna bring that feeder line up from Tarmigan Golf Course to forty-eight-hundred. It's a little over eleven thousand feet. It's a little bit challenging, because we'll be crossing both the Pooter River and the railroad. And that's one of the reasons why we want to get this project started right now, so we can get those permits in place. I would say that our experience, or the experience that the team has shared with me, is that dealing with the railroad for a utility crossing is a completely different animal than dealing with the railroad for an at-grade pedestrian or vehicle crossing. They just want to get paid for that utility crossing, because it's underground. It's no impact to their operations. There's a lot of other concerns on those at-grade crossings for vehicles and pedestrians. But we do still need to work through Laramie County to cross the Pooter, so those things all take time, so we need to get that process started. The path we'll take from Tarmigan is gonna go parallel to the existing sewer easement, so there's already utility corridor there, and we'll be leveraging that existing utility corridor. This is a picture of the OLT, the optical line terminal that'll be going at forty-eight-hundred, not this one in particular, but what it generally is gonna look like. And it's gonna, it'll be behind that fence, so it'll be screened, and that's an industrial area. Anyway, and then Ditesco also has a contract with Pulse, so they will be managing the construction for that. So they've done a great job of keeping Pulse on schedule, on budget, in their current bill, and we're excited to have them work on the Timnas project as well. Reporting, per the IGA, Pulse is gonna provide monthly reporting on all the project status. We will also be involved, will include that monthly reporting in the council packets when we do our reports. Timith will also be involved in the weekly construction meetings, so that we can be involved in what's happening on the day-to-day basis and make sure that any issues that are coming up are getting addressed, and we're able to make sure that our residents are being served well. Timith will retain control of the owner contingency in line item in the project, and then Pulse will have to report back to us if they use any of the materials or estimating contingencies on the project. This is the overall project cost for Phase One. So you can see that we have the feeder line, the OLT, the active network optics, which are the guts inside the OLT that will serve our first phase. We are not passing any residents, so that's why there's a little division by zero error at the bottom of the spreadsheet, but we are doing about a little over eleven thousand linear feet of that feeder route. This is the overall, overall project cost, so this is the same cost estimate that we worked through last time. As we work through a hundred percent design on the town, we will refine this, bring it back in probably smaller chunks as we talk about what those phases are. We'll have a detailed discussion about broadband and how that works during the Capital Improvement Plan Budget Work Session that's gonna happen next month. So I'm looking forward to really kind of starting to talk about how the project's gonna flow and what those are, what the options are. So the key points here are really that the Timnas Town Council will have the sole discretion to determine the amount and timing of the funding allocated to this project. We've talked a little bit about how the funding works and what we'll do to light up neighborhoods, but we'll be able to design the network and bring pieces that meet the budget desires of the town council. This operations is gonna really, this authorization will just fund that full design, and then that first piece of critical infrastructure. Happy to answer any questions that you guys have about the project in general or broadband. Like I rambled there, I'm sorry.
I just want to ask a question, Brian. The ARPA funds.
Yes.
We had concerns that these were going to expire at one point. Is that right, Lisa? Twenty-four. Okay, thank you. Perfect. That's what I want to think.
Anybody else?
I have one question there. I know we're applying for grants. Do we have an update on grant monies available for this?
Did you, were you looking at my presentation?
I was not, but you must be smart.
Yeah, so we are continuing to pursue all avenues of additional revenue, so we're working with Ditesco and Pulse, and we'll be working with Laramie County as well to pursue those options. Unfortunately, the metrics that were released that determine what a served and underserved or unserved area are did not really come down in our favor. The metrics were rather low, so most of Timnas is showing on the FCC maps as served. There are locations that are in the county, however, that are adjacent to Timnas that are underserved. So those are good qualific, or good grant opportunities. So what our hope is, is that we'll be able to partner with Laramie County and other agencies to go after combined projects on feeder line that will help serve Timas, but also help serve these underserved areas. And we will continue to watch for other funding opportunities that come about. There are funding that is available through DOLA, through the FCC, through the Colorado Broadband Office, and the NTIA. All of those are in different stages right now and have different sets of requirements. So I think as they set the criteria for how they're gonna distribute the money they have, there's possibility that we'll be able to take advantage of those as well.
So it sounds like any, we'll say, concrete opportunities out there. We're not looking at much as far as the percentage of the total funds. It would just be much more fuzzy if grants are gonna are gonna help us in any significant percentage on the total costs, so we can plan on the budget here.
Yes, I think that, I think our best opportunity is kind of these lower line items, the outside plant construction feeder lines, because those are the lines that are gonna connect, you know, kind of our big chunks of service, and those are the ones that are gonna go by those underserved areas. So, you know, that's about two and a half million dollars that we've got estimated right now, so that'll be our first target for pursuing some of that funding.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'll just to piggyback on what's been mentioned. I know this is a big project. It may seem like we're going through it relatively briefly to people tuning in or looking at this later. This is the culmination of actually multiple years now, discussions and work sessions and outreach and elections and surveys, and well, these numbers are pretty, pretty known at this point, from what we've been looking at, so that's all.
Any other comments? Okay, Brian, do you have anything else?
I don't.
Okay. Do I have a motion for Resolution Number fifty-one, Series twenty-two, twenty-three, a resolution for broadband funding authorization number one?
I move to approve Resolution fifty-one, Series twenty-two, thirty, the resolution for broadband funding authorization number one.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Resolution Number fifty-one, Series twenty-two, twenty-three, a resolution for broadband funding authorization number passed four to one. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
That was second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.